...the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission Thursday, January 7, 2016. And may we have the implication and then we'll pledge. And Mr. Tom Allen, please.
Our God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we're together tonight and have this opportunity and fellowship and deal with the things that pertain to this wonderful city that we are entrusted into care of. We ask you to be with us in our wisdom and judgment and make the best decisions possible for the best outcome of our wonderful city and for the residents and citizens there all. Thankful Father for the beautiful day you've given us and the little change in the weather and people come out and brave these cold, north winds and be here tonight. And we appreciate their presence, every one of them, and their participation in our meeting. We be welcome. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on information, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Thank you. May I have approval of December 3 minutes?
I believe you approve.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Massey. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. Is there any public comment? Okay, we've got some public comment tonight. I think Mr. RJ's hand went up first.
I believe this is the correct time to do this for you. And excuse my uniform, my name working this evening, but the only time I can get up here, I'm RJ Shelley. I'm RJ Shelley, I'm representing the Carabelle Fire Department this evening. And Chief Whaley, unfortunately, had a death and the family couldn't be here. So I keep them in your prayers. It's my understanding that you, the mayor and the city administrator, are getting together an inventory list of vehicles. We own six vehicles and one trailer. The reason I'm here tonight is we've had one broke down for quite a while and it's out there in Landmark at their fire department. I'm gonna get it towed to the city yard either tomorrow or next week, but we are asking for that to be surplus.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing is, I just want to make the commission aware, for the last four or five years, Carabelle has been covering, helping Landmark cover their fire district. Many reasons. The main reason is because they don't have many members and the members they do have are elderly. It's coming down now, though, that they're losing a lot. They've lost a lot of members, they don't have many. We've been in that situation here before, but thankfully, I think we got about 12 right now. But here lately, ran out of, their vehicles have broke down and they are having issues with vehicles. And we've been covering that district. And I reached out to Commissioner Sheryl Sanders with the county commission several years ago, and I don't believe anything was done. I think now the county's looking into it, but you know, I don't believe it's fair for our fire district to continue to have to cover that. You know, there is MSBE money that they receive, just like we receive for the county portions of our fire district. And we don't, we're not asking for any funds or anything, but I just want to make the commission aware that we are still covering that fire district and have been for some time.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I can discuss this with the attorney later, or you know, see what we might be able to do. Maybe he can contact the county and ask for some assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shelley, Officer Shelley. Okay, Ms. Lisa Munson?
I just wanted to take a minute. I'll turn my phone on. And I'm sorry, is that?
I've not done this before, but I just wanted to. I am Lisa Munson, I'm with the Carabelle Area Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to get up here in front of everybody for just a couple of minutes to say thank you, thank you so much to the entire community for their involvement in the Holiday on the Harbor and Boat Parade this last year. I think we accomplished what we set out to do as far as generating a large amount of business for the downtown shopping area. We had, although we only had 17 vendors in the festival itself, that's all day festival started at late notice, so we plan on making it bigger. We did have 28 boats, though, with the Boat Parade, and everything I've heard back from the community and the public was that they really, really enjoyed it and they got to see a whole new side of Carabelle, and I wanted to thank everybody. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to borrow Ms. Brenda and Chief of Police Hunnings and Tamara, if you wouldn't mind coming up here for just a minute. I have a certificate of appreciation from the Carabelle Chamber for all the help that you gave us for this. We couldn't have done it without you.
I want to say that city staff helped us.
The city staff.
William, streets and roads, all except whatever it is on behalf of them.
Yes, thank you.
The city and staff of the city of Carabelle and the Carabelle Police Department and Carabelle Cares, like I said, this is a certificate of appreciation that is awarded in recognition of all the outstanding participation and contributions that everybody here and the entire community did. It could not have been accomplished without you, and we want to thank you very much for your help. The pressure's on to make it bigger and better next year, so. But thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate Santa stopping by.
That's right, Santa stopped involved.
And Lisa, you can put me on record of supporting the downtown, here I am.
Who are you?
Supporting the downtown businesses in that, we got a steady flow of people all day long.
Yeah, also too, our. You know, I did pass along some certificates to other people, everybody that participated in the Boat Parade, all the vendors were given certificates of appreciation. And I also sent out, I believe, to the fire department for the fire trucks that Santa and the elves came on. So these weren't the only certificates, but I wanted to make them public in front of everybody because, like I said, we couldn't have done it without this whole, it was the community coming together and it was a wonderful event. Thank you.
And thank you, Lisa. And Captain Whaley did deliver Santa and his elf, took us, excuse me, Santa and his elf all around Carabelle, and it was just wonderful, all the youngsters came out, Santa, Santa, Santa was so exciting, and delivered us downtown to Santa's, to run there to receive the youngsters. It was great.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to, is there any more public comment? All right, then we'll move on to Commissioner's report. Commissioner Walden?
I have one for Chief Walden.
Okay.
Yeah, I had 71 dispatches, alarm calls five, animal calls five, two arrests, assistant brake county sheriff called 17 times, FWC one, FDLE one, DCF one, EMS five, burglaries one, we had three citizens arrested, civil complaints, three, domestic calls, six, follow-up investigations, eight, disturbance calls, six, intoxicated person, one, unlocked vehicle, seven, ordinance violations, one, traffic stops, 21, traffic citations issued, five, traffic crashes, one, revenue from citations, $107.48, he had. Security checks on our businesses, 141, going around putting their, when they do their security checks at night, but we thank you, Chief Walden.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
Okay, Commissioner Mathis?
I have.
Okay, and the attorney does have something.
I'm sorry.
All right, then Commissioner Massey?
I have one for the fire department for November to part of December. The rest of December, the computer was messed up at the fire station, so he didn't give me the rest of that one, but they did four. They responded to two first responder calls and three wrecks and a fuel spill on 98.
Okay, thank you very much. And Commissioner Allen?
Okay, I have nothing pertaining to the financial, but of course, y'all are aware that Marine Street is under construction, so if you're in that area, be very careful. There's a detour around by the park in, back over the way if you need to go around. C-30 Gulf Avenue, that's all.
Okay, okay, thank you, and happy new year to everyone. And yes, speaking of Marine Street, that is the Marine Street Stormwater retrofit that has been at the works by the CRA board for just about two years now. And it's going to eliminate all this, hopefully, they have promised environmental consulting technologies, it will eliminate all of those stormwater problems that we see down there. Drainage is going to be headed out with DOP, DEP permitting out to the Carabelle River. You can, once they open that detour, they had it closed off right now, but they'll have it open back up for a little bit. Boat ramp will be accessed until the very end. Where you see the gravel area that's going to be turned into a, what they call a bio-retention cell, is a rain garden, and they dug a hole there now, it's about 12 by 20 by probably 20 feet deep, they put that on the way to custom-made baffle box in there. I was there today and took pictures. There's culvert drainage pipes staged there on Marine Street and staged in Tamara Allen Park, they were delivered by semi truck there, there was a big crane there lifting the baffle box in. There's going to be a trench dug all the way from the boat ramp area and the boat turnaround area back north to the condos on the west side of Marine Street. At that point, Marine Street will certainly be cut off and you'll have to detour around Avenue C, back around on Third Street or Fifth Street and to Gulf Avenue, just for a little bit, about two months. You won't have to detour for two months, but it's going to take about that long. Then the entire Marine Street will be paved, and that will go with our new paving on Southeast Avenue B, and also Southeast E, Avenue E will be paved there from Wicked Willys going up to Third Street. This is paid for by the Northwest Florida Water Management District, $465,000 grant, plus, right now, it's around $80,000 that the Community Redevelopment Agency has put into it. And there, we have pledged a little bit more for that, but I just, we'll see if there's been work order changes adding to it, taking away from, it's been a progress going on for two years. Keisha and Courtney and Dan and the engineer from Environmental Technology and the two appointed members, Bo May and Rock House, have been at it with every minute. Raymond Williams worked on some, Bev Pucknall, Commissioner Mathis, Commissioner Massey has been involved in it, been on the tail end here. Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Walden have been involved, and there'll probably be a couple more little work order changes. But it's been a long road, but it got underway today and we're proud of that. And then just as Officer Shelley just mentioned, Courtney and I have completed the citywide vehicle inventory, and while we were out, we just decided to inventory the mobile equipment. I did the photo documentation and prepared reference folders that have been created, and Miranda has a copy of those and Courtney does. Greg Christopherson volunteered to compile separate Excel spreadsheets of the vehicles and mobile equipment, and that includes all statistics, the mileage, the bin numbers, and he did that for each department, and Miranda and Courtney have those Excel spreadsheets. We're trying now to, with input from department heads, to develop a new policy where each driver is assigned driver to each vehicle, have clear identification on their receipt of the vehicle that's receiving fuel, when they fuel up, and then each month, the department heads will report mileage on these vehicles, and Finance Clerk is going to develop spreadsheets to keep track of the mileage and fuel usage on the vehicles. Then in December, the Water and Sewer Department received delivery on a 2014 Silverado, Silverado F-150 pickup, it had 5,718 miles. Then we also received two 8x18 heavy-duty stainless steel trailers, and that will be used for heavy-duty hauling, 95 radar red water meters to be installed. In November, a new computer system was installed at the DOC lift station, and all these capital projects and renewal and replacement items were approved in our 2015-16 budget. On December the 3rd, Commissioner Allen and I attended the unveiling and dedication of the Camp Gordon Johnson Historic Marker, it's placed at the site where their permanent museum building is planned to be located. Then on December the 15th, I attended the first meeting as a board member of the new Restore Advisory Committee. This was an orientation-style meeting with introduction to the Dubury Consultants to explain the duties of this committee, will be first to develop the Restore Multi-Year Implementation Plan. A proposed meeting schedule was presented, eligible activities and projects as outlined by the U.S. Treasury were briefly discussed, and this advisory committee will eventually accept proposals, project ideas and concepts to be included in the multi-year implementation plan, but the advisory committee will not conduct final approval of projects. The final approval will be done by Franklin County Board of County Commissioners after the multi-year implementation plan has been approved by the U.S. Treasury. So it's gonna take a little while to start getting that money out there, and right now, there's about 3.5 million available, and there'll be another 1.2 or 1.5 next year. So it's not a lot, and they say that folks need to have lowered expectations. Over a 15-year period, it's just over 23 million that will be coming to Franklin County. All right, Commissioner Allen, Courtney, the chief and the deputy chief and myself from Carabelle attended the point of, oh, and Mr. Tim Lucas as well, that's right there, attended the, and Mr. Jim Newton. So we had proud at the point of distribution training here in Carabelle on December the 15th, and we developed a very preliminary draft outline for a disaster plan for Carabelle. And now I talked with Gaddis Heating and Cooling Company, Mr. Gaddis, he maintains the heating and cooling system for this building. He's reported to me and to staff, staff is well aware of it, that the boiler room infrastructure in this building has serious rusting issues, and the AC system was installed in 1987, which we know we had problems with, that it was down several weeks off and on this summer. Mr. Gaddis says there with the boiler room and system, that there are rusted pipes and worn-out pumps through the building. And at this point right now, the city pays Mr. Gaddis $800 a month just to come out for a monthly inspection, and that doesn't include the cost of the unforeseen needed repairs. And we just, in December, they needed to replace a pump, and the pump was, cost $1,000. So I don't know exactly what his fee was to do that, but I do know that the pump was that much.
That's when it flooded?
No, that was, that's another, that was the air conditioning unit that flooded over here, and that was $1,400, I believe, a couple of months ago. Okay, so right now, the power to the boilers is completely out, and Gaddis has been here once and then came back again this week, and Courtney can help me if I don't quite get it right, but he doesn't know where the breaker, he can't find the breaker, the circuit board that controls the power to the boilers, the boiler room. Right now, they're receiving power through a commercial-style extension cord. So he, you know, he wants us to devise some plan, and we do need to devise a plan. And with that, I'm going to request that we have an agenda item, a February agenda, to begin discussions, again, regarding relocation of City Hall. And this discussion should include, you know, our needs and options and responsibilities, and what are the costs gonna be? And the Finance Clerk has repaired a report on annual City Hall operational cost. I believe she's going back five years with it, she'll have that ready next month for us as well. And I'm sure this will be one of many discussions on this topic, but we have to start somewhere. So we'll just start with that, and thank you all for listening to me. And we'll move on to staff reports with Mr. Russell Large.
Excuse me. I have a question.
Sorry. It's Barbara.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back to the first part of your conversation about Marine Street.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Beth Barber. I want to ask a question about Marine Street. You said that they were considering, you're gonna repaint it. Marine Street makes a little S curve right there as you come off of Avenue B and around Just Rock Marina in front of Harry's Bar, in front of the old building there, and you have cars in front of Harry's that park front to back, and then on the other side of the street, they park this way. Sometimes, when we have a lot of traffic, that's close, and you got people pulling boats, and one car will stop one way and one car will stop the other way. Is it possible that we can reline the other side of the street to where they're back to back?
We have a special meeting scheduled for that, for, to have public input, a workshop, to have public input on how public would request the new parking layout for Marine Street. What day is that scheduled for?
Is that 16th? It's February 16th?
It's the CRA meeting day, I believe it is, third Tuesday in.
February 16th.
February 16th, and we're gonna have a workshop on that exact, so if you'd like to come and give a handbook at that time, that would be good.
Okay.
And we're also gonna have a workshop on that day of moving, relocation of the world's smallest police station.
Okay.
Six o'clock, special meeting, six o'clock. And then following that, we'll have our ready for CRA.
We've been discussing that for the last year.
The parking layout.
Yes.
Yes.
The mayor chief already went down there, and he's measured, they've been working on it for a while.
So, okay, is there any other questions? All right, then, I guess we're ready for Mr. Large.
All right, thank you to brief you on projects working on for the city. The city road paving projects, those plans are done, and bid form is done, so I'll leave that with Courtney tonight, and we'll help her coordinate with Franklin County to get that work processed by change order. The 2015-2016 water projects grant, we had an application under that program for a new water well, and that was not awarded. But can report, I spoke with Keith Mogg, they are expecting some filters to be delivered, which he would install before the spring, before the water demand increases. So that'll mitigate the sand being pumped up by the well, and we'll continue to seek funding for that project.
For the new well?
For the new well, that's correct. There's a CDBG grant cycle, we expect those applications to be due in March 2016, I mentioned this at the last meeting, so we're continuing to coordinate with the city and the grant administrator on that. We had a field meeting with the state agency staff on December 16th. We're working on Sands Park Phase Two and Phase Three. Those plans are complete, except for the structural portion for the fishing pier, so we expect to finish those and have plans completed, delivered to Courtney by Tuesday of next week. And we have a task order for Avenue, for Fifth Avenue for the depression, there is a possible sinkhole that repair, so I'll just, I'll wait to hear from Courtney on that.
You have submitted that task order?
I did, yes. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And then Ms. Tamara Allen, Waterfront Partnership?
Y'all noticed we matched tonight.
Good evening and happy new year to those of you I haven't seen since the new year. I had hoped tonight to be able to give you a big update on all of our projects, but my emails out to the various people at DEP and so forth have not, I did not get any responses back yet to my questions, so I'm here to tell you that we're proceeding on with our projects with McKissick Beach Management Plan and also the brownfields activities over at the old water plant. I did want to take a moment, following up on the comments that Lisa made, to thank the fire department particularly for helping us present Santa in such a nice and cheerful and fun way to the city, and I thought driving around waving to everybody ahead of time was really fun. So he was very popular this year, and we were also thankful that the, a group of ladies from East Point came over and gave out books to all the children. So that part went really well, but we have a lot of people, as with everything, a lot of people to thank for. And my final comment is that I had hoped tonight to be here as the president of Carabelle Cares to present the city a check for $4,111 and change for the bricks, the new bricks on the veterans' wall, and we will have, we are, the board has, is, no one has disagreed that we should use that money for that purpose, so we will be moving forward to getting a check sent over just as soon as, probably within the next week.
If you want to present it, I believe she could present it next month if she wants to do that, that would be all right.
Okay, well, I just didn't know how soon we needed the money, so I just wanted, I certainly had to get the board specifically to approve an expenditure, so they will, they're all, next week, next month would be perfect. Thank you. So I will, I won't bring one of those giant big checks, but I'll just bring a little short one that fits in an envelope. Thank you. Bye.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. David Butler with the EDC, is he still here? Okay, he has nothing, all right, thank you. And then Mr. Hartman, do you have a report?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Courtney, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Keisha?
Yeah, Courtney and I will be attending CRS training. As y'all know, we've been trying to get back into the CRS program, which gives you additional discounts on your flood insurance. The guidelines, everything has gotten a lot tougher, so we both need the training because we're both issuing permits, and the closest that we found will have to go together, but it will conflict with the March 3rd meeting, the first meeting of March, so I'm requesting that we move the meeting to the 10th, because we will both be out that week.
Both of them will be out, and so there wouldn't be anyone to take a minute, although I did ask Miranda, and she said she wasn't.
I mean, I could always get it off the recorder.
Yeah, but we like to have one of you here, at least.
I can make a motion to move the meeting to the 10th.
Okay, and that's Thursday the 10th at 6:00 p.m.
March meeting.
Yes.
The March meeting, I make a motion to move it to March 10th.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Massey to move the meeting to March 10th.
I'm sorry to get that one.
Okay, and seconded by Commissioner Mathis. All in favor? Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to our public hearing. We have a resolution number, and the number needs to be renumbered, you should just let me know before the meeting started. It's a resolution number 012016 concerning our local mitigation strategy. And would Mr. Hartman like to read that? Do we need to read this?
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution, local mitigation strategy, whereas the city of Carabelle is vulnerable to the human and economic costs of natural, technological.
We really can't hear you.
Sorry. Whereas the city of Carabelle is vulnerable to the human and economic costs of natural, technological and societal disasters, and whereas the Carabelle City Commission recognizes the importance of reducing or eliminating those vulnerabilities for the overall good and welfare of the community, and whereas the city of Carabelle has been an active participant in the Franklin County Local Mitigation Strategy Task Force, which has established a comprehensive coordinated planning process to eliminate or decrease these vulnerabilities, and whereas these proposed projects and programs have been incorporated into an initial edition of Franklin County Local Mitigation Strategy that has been prepared and issued for consideration and implementation by the communities of Franklin County, now therefore be it resolved that the Carabelle City Commission adopts the Franklin County Local Mitigation Strategy to reflect the current needs. to reflect the current need and citizens' desire to identify and implement hazard mitigation initiatives that will reduce the county's susceptibility to numerous hazards, and at the appropriate time, the commission will develop and submit funding proposals to appropriate agencies to implement the hazard mitigation initiatives identified in the Franklin County Local Mitigation Strategy. And that would take a motion.
Okay. May we have a motion to approve this local mitigation strategy resolution?
I'll have a motion. Okay.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All approved?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. And the motion carries, and that was a motion by Commissioner Massey and a second by Commissioner Allen. Okay. Then we're going to move on then to old business concerning the Gulf Unmanned System, a discussion of possible action concerning the Gulf Unmanned Systems Center, the second lease amendment. And Mr. Hartman, you circulated an original lease amendment, and then there was a slight change on the paragraph two regarding rent. Did everyone see that slight change?
And I can explain it.
Okay.
And it comes from the last, from the last meeting. And this is the lease of the five acres that would make up the, what they're calling the test track. It would be five acres in addition to the five acres that already sits out there. The Gulf Unmanned System folks were tasked with getting with Edward Brown to develop the Exhibit B, which is the exact legal description for that, for the property that they want to lease. I have not been updated on that, meaning I assume they're working on it, but they'll get that done when they get that done. Again, it's agreed on, we have a rough sketch of the five acres. The other provision that we talked about at the last meeting was the rent provision, talking about essentially that they will begin paying rent of $100 a month per acre upon the track going into operation or one year from execution of the lease amendment, whichever occurs earlier. So it could be less than a year if they get it done and get into operation and are using it. But in any event, from execution of this, whether they're done or not, they start paying rent in a year. And then the term, they have some options for renewals and that sort of thing, but it will mirror the term of the long-term lease on the part of the property that has the warehouse on it. So they'll line up. And they would be taking it, leasing it as-is, and there is also a provision, again pertaining only to the five acres, but that either party can terminate the lease with 120 days' written notice.
And every year that rent goes up...
That's correct. Yep. The rent increases 3% a year when they start paying.
Is there anyone here from GUSC representing GUSC tonight? That's unusual. Now, are we by any chance holding on approval of this second lease agreement until they produce their Exhibit B?
I would think that if you're, if the city, and we don't necessarily need a vote, but what we can do is, when Exhibit B is done, they'll come back for the city one last time for final approval, but maybe just to, they have a copy of this, I've not received any comments back from them, they provided a copy to review. Certainly, if anybody, this is our time to discuss it. Obviously, it's most efficient if we have it all ironed out, when they come back, that it's perfunctory that we kind of get it done, but we'll have it in front of us again.
Okay. So since you, you sent to them this slight change on paragraph two regarding the rent, have you heard anything from them, a reply from them?
No, nothing yet.
That's what I thought. Now, if they, are there provisions in this lease or the original major lease amendment, the first amendment, that if they, GUSC ceases to pay the rent or that they're late on the rent, what are the provisions? How is the city protected here?
On this one, the city would be protected in two ways. One is the original lease has default provisions in it that miss payments. There's a process that we go through where you provide notice and an opportunity to cure. So we'll send them a letter saying, hey, you didn't make your rent payment, you need to make it within this period of time. If they fail to do that, then they can be found in default of the lease. Also, if, the interesting thing about the lease amendment is, if we, for any reason, we can provide 120 days' written notice that we're not interested in leasing the property to them anymore, the five acres. So...
And this lease agreement and the first lease agreement amendment, that is 25 years, is that correct? 25 years with an option, a second option?
Correct. Fifteen total, yeah.
Okay. So they could possibly have possession of the property. Of course, the people that are managing and owning it now won't be there, but for 50 years possibly. And I just, you know, want to remind everyone here that we won't be here in 25 years or 50 years, certainly, and we want to make sure this is right for the future. Okay. So is there, does anyone have anything else they'd like to discuss regarding this agreement? I do want to just go over the paragraph two. It says, "Payment of rent shall commence upon the earlier of the proposed test track going into operation or one year from execution of this lease. The tenant shall pay to the landlord the sum of $100 per acre of additional leased area shown in Exhibit B." Now, does it, do we need to say that they need to pay per month, $100 per month, per acre? Okay. And each year subsequent to the first year in which rent is paid for the remainder of the lease term, as extended, the lease amount shall increase by 3% a year from the year before. And then the term is similar to the term of the original lease amendment. And the termination is there, we have, could cure the lease or have, give them 120 days' notice.
I don't know how we're going to know when they're going to finish it and start using it, because that's when they're going to start paying. They ain't going to start paying when they sign the lease. And they're going to start paying until they finish the product or one year.
Right. So if they, if they...
If they finish in two months, how are we going to know? I mean, they're leasing a piece of property from us.
It's a good, good point. Good point is, I mean, we're obviously going into a business arrangement with someone. We're trying to give them a little bit of trust, I mean, both directions, that, you know, they're trusting them, that they wouldn't try to finish it up, start using it, getting rent, I'm sorry, whatever. They'll be getting paid for the use of it, and then trying to, you know, hold that money without telling us to pay it. You're done, we're using it, it's gone into operation. If they did something like that, we found out about it, we terminated. It's a, I mean, they would be in default.
It's good enough.
Well, if it is a small town, we would probably...
Run around that...
Bear around for hours.
No, no, it's a good point. It's a good point.
Excellent.
But it's sort of, I mean, I always think, many clients ask that, they're like, can we, there's a level of trust. I mean, there's some trust until you trust them to die. We trust until we don't.
Good point. Someone run out there and check them every day.
Keisha.
Okay. Then, well, we don't want to, we want to table this once again on the final vote until we receive their Exhibit B, but we are basically all in a verbal agreement of the second amendment to the original lease agreement.
And I mean, what I'll do is, I'm sure they will be in contact with me here this month, and I will tell them, hey, you came up in front of the city, there was no objection by any commissioners as to the content, and you need to hustle and get that Exhibit B, and we'll see at the next meeting.
All right. Do we need to motion for a table?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion then to table this item?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mathis, second by Commissioner Massey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item two, discussion of possible action concerning dedicating Calhassan Street to honor the late Mayor Wilburn Curly Messer. And I understand that the family has requested to remove this item off the agenda, so...
I have an update, but if we're removing it, we're removing it.
Yeah. Oh, do you want to remove it?
Nope. I mean, no, if it's removed...
Okay. It's removed, okay. All right. Do we need a motion to remove this item?
No.
Okay. All right, then. Then we'll move forward. Discussion of possible action regarding the city personnel policy. This was tabled from the December 3rd meeting. And I know that all of you received a hard copy of the personnel policy on November 6th. On November the 20th, you all received a copy of the proposed changes or additions, and then on December the 7th, you received a copy of the proposed changes, revisions highlighted. And then on December the 30th, you received a copy, again, of the revisions, proposed revisions that were highlighted. So does everyone have what they need then at this point? Okay. I've worked with policy, you know, for four and a half years, and I've discovered a few inconsistencies and some unwritten policies that are in place, but they're not really record, they're not recorded in the personnel policy. So we could go first to, and all of you all last month got a copy of the organizational chart that they're going to put in there. All right. So move to page 14 under definitions. And add, I'm suggesting to add meals and rest breaks in there. That's not, that's not really described to, for a scheduled eight and a half hour workday. They have one 30-minute unpaid meal break with each workday shift, and then for the, and then two 15-minute paid rest breaks. And then for scheduled, a 10-hour workday, they get one 30-minute unpaid meal break, and then three, because they only work four shifts a week, three 15-minute paid breaks.
Do we have anybody on a 10-hour workday?
I believe we do.
We do streets and roads, works 10-hour days, and Police Department does 12-hour days. And then Sewer Department works 10-hour days.
The street and roads works 10 hours a day? What's their hours? Seven to two?
They, they, they're all kind of different, but they do 10-hour shifts.
There's not the three of them. So what is their hours?
It should be six to, is it four more? Six to four?
Okay.
I have a problem with the time for the lunch break. I did some traveling left here, went to Ron's coffee shop, and based on five minutes there, five minutes to get a order, five minutes to eat, five minutes to get back, and that would be the quickest way you could eat for 30 minutes. There are others in our, in our staff that go out toward Alligator Point, I mean, to the lighthouse for home for lunch. There's no way that can happen in 30 minutes. I would suggest this 30-minute be removed and remove it to one hour.
And so you want to give them a one hour...
One hour for lunch.
Uh-huh. Not paid.
That's fine with me if they're not paid, if they understand that.
All right. Then that would extend their workday to 5:00 P.M., is that correct?
Why would you do that?
Because right now, you work 8:00 to 4:30 with one half hour off unpaid. That gives you eight hours of pay. Is that correct?
No, that's an hour lunch break right there.
The way I understand it...
The office, we work from 8:00 to 4:30, and we have an hour lunch break.
So you're working seven and a half hour days?
That's right.
Okay.
Now, the city of Appalachia Cola has from, they work from 8:00 to 4:00 and have an hour for lunch, but they, they do sort of like we do, I think, where they move back and forth and different people fill it up. The county's time is 8:30 to 4:30, and they take an hour off, the whole staff takes off. And so I think we would be operating basically on that system there, and I believe that would be fair, because people just cannot go somewhere and eat here for me.
I understand that. How do they, how do they get paid for a 40-hour work week when they work seven and a half hour days?
Well, you can pay them for the hour then if you want to.
And do they, do they get paid for a 40-hour work week, but they only work seven and a half hours?
No, they work seven, we work seven and a half.
And they get paid for eight hours? So they get paid lunch break?
Paid 30 minutes.
They pay 30 minutes. Well, they pay an hour, we pay 30 minutes.
What are you talking about? Who gets, who works seven hours? Who works seven and a half hours?
Well, they, they work, they're there for eight hours, but when you take off for an hour lunch break, it works off seven.
You're talking about inside or everybody?
That, that's, that's Atlas, that's not us.
Oh.
Okay. So what, what do y'all do here?
We work from 8:00 to 4:30 with an hour lunch break. So we work seven and a half hours.
Seven and a half hours.
For an extra 30 minutes of that.
But you get paid, the hourly workers get paid for eight hours, and they work seven and a half hours.
Right.
So they get a 30-minute lunch break? I mean, they get...
They get an hour.
They're paid 30 minutes, and then they take 30 minutes off. That's what she's saying.
And then do they take the two 15-minute paid breaks?
I've never, we've never really done 15-minute rest breaks.
And I just, I got that information off the State of Florida Human Resources site, there's a site there.
State of Florida takes one hour lunch break.
But do they work, do they work eight-hour days?
They work, no. They work whenever. But they have to take leave. I mean, they work eight-hour days, they get an eight, they get an hour lunch break. Administrative shift. Kind of like the other, like me, we just, whatever. We don't get the leave for lunch break. But the administrative shift, they work 8:00 to 5:00 with an hour lunch break, and they have to pay that.
That's at the prison?
That's there.
Where do they go for lunch?
A lot of times. There's the 300 workers out there, where they go.
Do they have a cafeteria down there or something? Don't they feed?
No, they can go up there, or administrative can go.
No, they can wherever.
Yeah.
So basically, then, what I'm understanding is that the employees basically are paid and salary to, their, their salary's based on an eight-hour day, but they work only seven and a half hours. Actually, they work, you're here, you're here from 8:00 A.M. to 7:30, excuse me, 4:30, 8:00 A.M. to 4:30.
Right.
Which is eight and a half hours.
Right.
And you take an hour off.
Right.
So you're working, they work seven and a half hours, but the payroll, the people, the ones that are paid by the hour are getting paid for eight hours?
Eight hours.
And they're working...
They're paying, the city's paying for a 30-minute lunch break, a 30 minutes of that half, of that hour lunch break.
Right. So that's a benefit that I, after all these years, I didn't realize that they got a 30-minute paid break like that. But if they're not taking their 15-minute breaks, that equals out to be the same. A lot of places give, most of all places give a 15-minute break in the morning and a 15-minute break in the afternoon.
Works are supposed to get the same, the same issue. But where on, where have I also, I'm supposed to get 15 minutes. That's, that's, this is the way it's set.
Any, any...
We didn't set it up. It's been like that, correct?
Yeah. There's no wording on it. So maybe, maybe we need to add wording that describes that, so the people that are coming along understand that, you know, they work, that they're scheduled to work eight and a half, half-hours, they work seven and a half hours, that they get paid for eight hours. paid for eight hours.
I think the simplest solution is to strike this change, just to strike it out and go like we've been going.
Right, just go with an unwritten policy like we've been going.
Yeah.
No, we can put it in policy that they get, we pay, they take an hour.
It's the same thing, it's just worded different. It's just, only we're taking an hour and not taking a 15-minute break in the morning, a 15-minute, we're just taking it all at one time.
They're combining their two 15-minute breaks.
So you've just worded it, Denver, but it still amounts to the same amount?
Okay.
Because you're paying for the 15-minute work breaks in, in here, so.
And this is, this is including the, all of the, not just, not just the staff here at City Hall, I'm, you know, referring to all of the employees as well.
Now, the road department, they don't get an hour lunch break. They don't get an hour lunch break.
Who's that?
The road department, they don't get an hour lunch break, because they have inmates. So they work in 10, they work in 10 hours, which they only, they don't have inmates 10 hours, but.
All right, is there any motion?
I move to strike 14, page 14, the meal breaks and the rest breaks.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Allen and a second by, excuse me, Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Mathis to strike this suggestive revision. Is there any discussion? All right.
We leave it the same, is that what we're doing?
We're just not going to add it. We're just going to, just go ahead with an unwritten policy on lunch breaks and rest breaks. No policy.
No policy.
No policy.
How are we going to enforce?
There's nothing to enforce. Just going to move forward. We'll let, we'll let the administrator manage it the way it's been managed.
Courtney, it'll be up to you.
We'll, we'll have to look to the administrator.
Well, we can put it in there that they get one hour, that they get a one-hour lunch break. I mean, we can put it in here. I mean, we gotta take it out.
Well, we have a motion and a second, so.
So do y'all want to just take it out and let her manage it? Or do you want to just put it in there that they get an hour lunch break?
I don't have a problem, only if they work eight hours.
Yeah, I don't have a problem either, as long as they work eight hours and they didn't pay for eight hours, I would expect, I would expect an eight-hour workday.
So they basically just want to take their two 15-minute breaks and work the 30 minutes?
Yes, that's what, I believe that's what they're doing.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
All right, so we'll, we'll let the administrator.
I mean, I feel like y'all were like talking about us like we're not here, like we set this up, but this has been like this for ages.
No, no, it's fine. Just calm down.
We just tried to get it straight.
I mean, everybody keeps looking down here and.
I come in to do that.
No, it's, it's been an unwritten policy.
It's still an hour whichever way you look at it.
That's what I'm saying, it's an hour. And if we have any comments from the.
Every state and county building and business is running theirs. The county does it, City of Appalachia does it, everybody else does it.
They combine their, their two 15-minute breaks and take their lunch break.
Their one-hour lunch break.
And that's exactly the policy of Appalachia Cola and the county.
And the state.
And they do rotate.
Which actually the state gets an hour lunch break and a 15-minute break.
Yeah, they rotate here too.
Actually, get their two 15-minute breaks too. And Keith, you know that.
All right.
You take more than a third hour and a half lunch break.
All right. Calm down. All right, we're gonna.
Let's do it.
Move forward. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We've had our discussion, so all in favor to strike this one and leave the, leave it as is?
Aye, aye.
Okay then, still under definitions, probationary employees. Right now.
15.
Page 15. Right now, every, every reference in here says that the employees are on a 12-month probationary period. But during my working with employees and one time I was trying to have an employee follow through with something that was promised during meeting, conditions upon hire, and then I discovered that that employee was already off probation. And six months had passed and I was going according to the, to this policy. This policy refers to 12 months. There's nowhere in the policy that says police department serves a 12-month probationary period and all other departments serve a 90-day probation period. It's not written in the personnel policy. And I don't have a problem with the 90-day personnel, the 90-day probationary period. But I'm, I'm just saying I don't. Because that evidently, I don't know how long that's been going on, but it's been a 90-day probationary period. And if we want to have 90 days, then we need to, we need to have that in the personnel policy so that, so that the employees know too, you know, if they're gonna, which employees are gonna be on a 90-day probationary period, and which employees are gonna be on 12 months, or if it's gonna be a six-month probationary. And is it required for the police department to have a 12-month probationary period? You know, I, I don't know these things, so.
I make a motion for any city employee that's retired to be on a 12-month probationary period.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Massey for all employees to be on a 12-month probationary period. And do we have a second?
A second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any discussion?
I would prefer the 90 days.
I mean, a 12-month probationary, anything can happen in that, that 12-month period.
I understand. Now, the police department, I'd like to get his opinion on the police department. Now, would we go 12?
I would rather the 12 months, leaving the thing about 18, give them plenty of time to screw up.
For the police department.
I'm sorry, you're saying 90?
I want 12 months, I don't want the 90 days.
Okay, 12 months for the police department and.
I still make a motion for any city employee to be hired to be on a 12-month probationary period. And Mr. Walden seconded that.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed?
Aye, opposed.
So we have Massey and LaPaz and Mathis and Walden in favor and Mr. Allen, Commissioner Allen has opposed. So the motion carries and we want to try to indicate that in the, in the definitions and that all employees are on a 12-month probationary period. Thank you. And then under standards of conduct, page 19. It's suggested to insert the wording there, theft and/or unauthorized use of city equipment, facilities and utilities in any manner, or unacceptable standards of conduct, misuse and/or unauthorized use of scheduled workdays, shift hours, or break time, or unacceptable standards of conduct. And this is not intended to be an all-inclusive listing of unacceptable standards of conduct. So what do you think about inserting that under standards of conduct?
I make a motion to pass that under standards of conduct.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Massey. And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Mathis, is there, is there any discussion?
I'd like to make one comment on this. Any of these things that are crimes are certainly, should be reason for dismissal. In the charter for our city, it says any commissioner that's convicted of or with a crime and state statute defines that as misdemeanor or felony is up for immediate suspension. And I would expect that that should apply not only to the commissioners, but to the employers as well, employees as well. So I believe that any employee that misconducts, that with bad conduct of these things that become criminal would certainly be, need to be dismissed, and I would support that.
And the key word is convicted.
Because lawyers always want to weigh in. Is there definitely some misdemeanors? I mean, again, I'm, I don't want to talk about examples, but.
There are different degrees, yes.
Your hunting license expires and, or your fishing license expires and they give you a ticket or you, you've had some history or whatever and you have, and they charge you with a misdemeanor or something. There probably are some, and it's up to you all, but there are probably some crimes that, you know, are quote-unquote crimes, but they're not involving what they call moral turpitude or anything that would affect your ability to govern or even, I would think a lot of people's opinion of you, if that's what the concern is. But generally, it's your ability to serve. You know, and felonies, of course, but then misdemeanors cover a whole pile of different offenses.
As defined in the state constitution is what we're talking about then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, is there any more discussion?
Do we have a motion?
We had a motion by Commissioner Massey and a second by Commissioner Mathis.
For these words or was we adding more?
Oh, I don't know, were we adding more?
No, I wasn't adding more, I was just saying the importance of this.
That's where I got.
That was under discussion.
That if, if the commission. If the commission, the point I'm making, if the commissioners are held to this distinct level, then I certainly think the city employees should be also. Because as this says, it, it deals with the attitude of the community toward our people. We have to behave ourselves all the time. Because it does cast reproach and, and anything, any one of us that does something naughty, it's gonna reflect on everybody else. So that's just a comment.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, carries. On the driving records, it's suggested just to insert some wording on there. An annual motor vehicle report from the state will be placed in employee file. And Courtney did a little research on that, thank you Courtney. And she says that she reported that the motor vehicle report is $40 each for an annual report. And she suggests just to do an annual check of the driver's license and then every five year do an MBR, you know, because it would be costly. We have about 10, 10 drivers. 15 drivers.
Including police?
Okay.
I see one every six months, it's free.
A driver's license.
For the MBR, but just to run their driver's license check?
Which is free. Yeah, but not, not the MBR every year. So, so you want to do an annual check of the driver's license, you say, every six months or once a year? Okay, and what about this MBR, motor vehicle?
Whatever y'all have for that one, because the thing about it is, they can run them to see if they have a driver's license, they can run it for free. If they do it every six months, it won't take them 30 minutes to do all 15 reports.
Would you, would you be able to do that, run it every six months? Or how do you feel about that, Courtney?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, well.
It'll cover us with insurance. I mean, if we had an employee that just say their license just got suspended last month and they get in a wreck and they say they didn't even know their license was suspended for some odd reason, you know?
Child support.
Yep, child support or something, anything. And they got in an accident and then we're liable.
Okay then, just to insert the wording, a semi-annual check of the driver's license will, will be performed, conducted semi-annually.
What if they violate that in the first month and then it's 12 months later before we find out?
Six months.
They can, they can, we're doing it every six months. That's why, that's why I said instead of.
So they do it the first month and then six months later we find out? Okay.
We can't do it every month, but they have.
No.
Okay, so may I have a motion then on the semi-annual driver's license check?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Massey. Any more discussion? All approve?
Aye.
All oppose? That carries. All right, under performance evaluations, it currently reads right now that performance evaluations are being, are being done semi-annually and that's, that's not being done. I think, I feel like a more realistic goal would be an annual evaluation for regular employees and semi-annually for probationary employees. And if we feel like that's more realistic and if that, that's something that the department heads can do and then they refer their evaluations on to the, to the administrator, then we should, you know, just go ahead and indicate it that way in the personnel policy. What do you think? Do you think semi-annually is sufficient for an evaluation? Okay, so.
And probationary?
Semi-annually?
Yep.
Twice in their 12-month period?
Yep.
So can we have a motion for that?
I'm gonna make a motion to do probationaries semi-annually and non-provisionary employees once a year.
Okay. And may we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion for, did you get that, Ms. Keisha?
I did.
Okay. And a motion by Commissioner Massey, a second by Commissioner Walden, any more discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
All disapprove or opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're almost finished. On the life insurance, excuse me, under their health and life insurance, page 31.
Now, are we skipping page 26?
Maybe I did. I guess I did, page 26.
It's on the annually payout, the 40-hour, oh, I might have done that.
Okay, what is it?
They can sell 40 hours of their accumulated leave and 80 hours for employees with 10 or more years. Do they have a cutoff limit for that, for that leave? Can you sell back up to 240 hours?
No, you can only sell the 80.
No, I'm saying in a lifetime span, is there a cutoff limit of how much you can, like after you've already sold back 240 hours, is that it? Can't do it no more after that?
No, it's 80 a year.
And it doesn't have a cutoff? Okay, but when you go to retire or quit, we still pay employees 240 hours of their annual leave?
If they have that.
If they have it approved.
That's all they can, that's the cap every year.
Even though we've already paid it out?
That's the cap every year. And they're earning it faster than they can take it for most of them in that interest.
There's no way to do that because you only get so many, you only get so many, so much leave a year. But what I'm saying is, they get paid, you, you're already selling back some annual leave, but you only get paid out 240 hours after you retire or quit. So actually.
You can only carry that much. Go year to year.
They don't understand what I'm saying.
I know.
Keith understands what I'm saying.
Well, when we work, you can have 200, you can sell it back, but that comes off at the end when you retire.
That's right.
All that you cashed in comes off of that 240 hours.
You can only cash in 240 hours.
Over your career.
Your whole career.
That's the way it is.
And once you go to quit or retire, if you've already done that 240 hours, you don't get paid for it. That's it. You can sell back.
Even if you still have it on the books?
That's right. Two-hundred and forty hours is all you pay back period. You have to take the rest of it off, yes ma'am.
You have to take it off, you have to take the two-hundred and forty hours off before you retire?
Or forfeit it, yes ma'am. Two-hundred and forty hours. You, you can sell back twenty-four hours a year in December, well, you can't do that no more, that stopped it. You can sell back twenty-four hours a year up to ten years. After that two-hundred and forty hours has been paid back, I mean, paid out, you're, you had a gas or you for, you forfeit it or you take it off. And that's what I was just asking because I see some of them, they can sell back eighty hours a year and some of them sell back forty hours a year, but they, so what, what's the two-hundred and forty hours, what, what's the reason for two-hundred and forty hour cap every year? There's no reason for it because you're getting paid for it anyway.
That's not the one.
You know what I'm saying? City employees getting paid for it regardless and there's no sense in even having a two-hundred and forty hour cap. That's the purpose of the two-hundred and forty hour annual leave cap, is you get paid for it one time in your career. And once you, once you've been paid for that two-hundred and forty hours, you've been paid for it. There is no more selling it back or you either take it off or you forfeit it.
Well, now, first, I will say.
But that may not be complicated.
Well, not necessarily. We could figure it. Our staff is so, we operate a small staff and we have approved two-hundred, five-hundred, you know, like, like state.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and, and they cannot, between their accumulated leave, which, you know, we all see what they make especially once they have seniority, accumulated good deal leave and their holiday days and their comp time, it's almost impossible for them to take off all the time that they, that they have.
Yeah, well, that's the next thing. There's nothing in our personnel policy on comp leave. I've read it twice.
Okay. Harper, let's, let's address this one and then we can move to comp.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I don't care if they sell it back. I would just say.
Didn't we just add comp leave last time?
Oh, it's not in there. I didn't read. If you can find it, I mean, I read it twice. I couldn't find nothing about comp leave. We definitely need that in there because there's gems of that.
Okay, all right. Well, do you, do you, are you suggesting then to change that, Commissioner Massey, on the sell back forty hours or eighty hours depending on?
No, I was just wondering what the two-hundred and forty hour cap is because that, that means nothing really because they're selling it, they're selling it back regardless.
Comp time is addressed in this.
But you still got a two-hundred and forty hour cap on it. Either you either take the two-forty cap off and then sell back whatever they got or you put a two-forty cap on it. There is no, in here it says there is a two-hundred and forty hour cap, but really it's not. You know what I'm saying, ma'am?
I believe I do. I, I, I can study on this one a little more. Many, many companies do offer the sell back of eighty hours for the higher employees with seniority because they are earning so much. And the, and two-hundred and forty to earn cap at, during, for one year, you can only earn two-hundred and forty hours or carry over two-hundred and forty hours. That's common as well.
Mm-hmm, that's common. But what I'm saying is they're carried, that's what I'm saying, you got a two-forty cap, but the two-forty caps, they're not born by that. We're not, we're not born by the two-forty cap.
Now, we're not born by lunch breaks and meal breaks either.
I mean, I don't, Karen, I was just wondering when I was reading it, I'm just saying, there's, it's a two-forty cap, but it's not, no, that's more than.
Now, comp time, and I actually have mine in red, I have an old personnel policy.
Okay, I didn't see it.
Twenty-two.
It's on page twenty-two, but we have an old one. I don't know what date, but it would be somewhere around twenty-two or twenty-three. We have, there's overtime and work day and comp time.
I see that, but I don't see nothing about the.
It says, "Compensatory leave may be granted to salary employees if the city administrator determines the leave will not be unduly disrupted to, to the department. Compensatory leave may be approved in six-month increments. Anytime approved from January one to June thirty-first must be used by June thirty-first and time approved from June thirty-first to December thirty-first must be used by December thirty-first. Responsible department head shall maintain accurate records of all comp time worked and justification for saying. Each department head shall submit a statement to the city finance officer reflecting all comp time weekly. Compensatory leave may be taken in hourly increments and the approval of compensatory leave is governed by the Fair Labor Standards Act."
Well, that is not. I don't agree with you.
Look around and then right under it's section five and Troy Bennett.
I got it on page twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-four.
But have they been taking their comp leave?
Yes.
Have you been scheduling their comp leave?
Yes.
So any leave that's been approved, they've been taking it off within the time limit plus what they have, what they've accumulated, what they accumulated, huh?
And I haven't made an exception this one for Jerry because William was off the month of December and it couldn't lose Jerry too, so, but I let him take his the first week of January. As long as he was using it, as soon as.
That's fine, use it.
Where December thirty-first would have been the cutoff, he just went to the very next week, but they're using it within those six months now.
And they're losing, I mean, they're using.
Years that are lost.
What they've already accrued.
And I've actually seen, I've actually seen them in there reporting their time, I can't remember who, but I've seen off on and reporting their time.
William took a bunch of time off.
That's fine, I was just wanting to.
Okay, all right then. Okay, then we'll move on to page thirty-one regarding.
Oh, I wanted to do, thirty-twenty-seven.
All right.
The death in the family, where they get through consecutive work days.
Yours must have the spaces in and mine does too. I've got, they do have, what's before that and after that? Arrangement leave. That's on page twenty-five, Keisha, and the others have it on page twenty-seven.
It's a half a day to a, to three days? Why don't we just change that and give them two days administrative leave if they have immediate family member? Because it doesn't say, it just says a family member. So we need to, you know, put what family member, like immediate family member?
All right.
And the definition of immediate family member. Does anybody have a call in the lab?
I don't, but I can't make a, a motion.
I think it's fine like it is. Employees' family.
Okay, so, and, and as it is, as it reads now, in the event of a death in the employee's family, the employee shall be allowed from one half-day to a maximum of three consecutive work days to attend the funeral without loss and regular pay. So it's administrative leave of sorts.
Yes, I agree with that, but.
I do too.
I think the family member should be immediate family member and put the definition of immediate family member in there. And give them two, just give them two days instead of a half a day to three days, just give them two administrative days.
Okay, would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I would.
Okay, so do you have that written down?
So my very first sentence?
Well, let's see if it, if it carries.
Okay.
Go back over, so.
I made the motion for it to read, "In the event of, of a death in the employee's immediate family, employees shall be allowed two administrative work days to attend the funeral without loss or regular pay."
So what would you consider immediate family?
The definition of immediate family member, husband or spouse, husband, wife, children, grandchildren, sister, brother, grandparents.
Parents.
Okay.
Yeah.
And paying up the parents. That's it.
No S, no F.
No S.
And there's nothing saying that they can't take a, a vacation.
Oh, no. Oh, no. A sick day, family sick day, whatever they want to take, but the definition of immediate family is spouse, grandparents, parents, brother, sister, brother and wife or sister.
Okay, then we have a motion for that and.
So we're going to put immediate and then put the definition right after that?
You can.
Or you can put it under.
Under definitions.
You can word it in there somewhere, immediate family member. Or you can put immediate family number back in the definition page.
Yeah.
You don't even have to put it there. Where the definitions is, put immediate family and it'll type the definition there, but just put immediate family in there.
All right, and then, all right, we have a motion for that. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Massey and a second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any more discussion?
Does your motion include two days?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it does. Two days administrative leave.
I would like to see if you would amend that to leave three days in there.
Do we have a second to that amendment?
I'll say.
Okay, so we have a, a second then to that amendment to amend it, amend it for three days administrative leave. Okay. Did you get that, Ms. Keisha?
Yeah, I'm right that my.
Well, you have to show them.
We have to vote on the amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
Because me and Commissioner Mathis said two days.
All right, then. Mr., Mr. Hartman, make sure we do this right now. We had a, we had a motion for two days and Commissioner Allen amended that motion to make it three days and we had a motion and a second for two days.
He would do his, his withdrawal's motion and he'd make another one.
Now, who, who has to read?
Wasn't second, the person who made the motion.
I made the motion to do two consecutive days for immediate family members. Mr. Mathis seconded. Commissioner Allen made a motion for three consecutive, three administrative days.
We just, we just need, we need, we need, we need to vote on the motion that you made in two days and obviously if you want to, if everybody's in agreement to make it back to three, just vote a and a down.
My motion was to amend the motion that was on the table.
We've got. But that motion has to be carried out before we can amend it.
Right.
So everybody, we have to vote nay and then do the next one.
Just vote nay and roll the dice.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
It's that work.
So Commissioner Mathis, Mathis withdraws and second.
And then you withdraw your motion and caliphie that one.
No, how do you withdraw my motion? I said I made the motion to, to pay the administrative days and employees' immediate family.
So that's still need a second.
Right. No, you did get a second. Commissioner Mathis executed and I called for discussion and we have another motion.
Call that one for a vote.
All right, I'm going to call this for a vote. The, the two days, immediate family member. All in favor for two days? All opposed on the two days?
Aye.
Okay, then, now we'll, we'll do the motion that Commissioner Allen made by Commissioner Mo, Motion. Commissioner Allen, three days, arrangement pay, administrative leave. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the, okay. And I oppose as well. Okay, so the motion carries. So then everybody gets three days administrative leave for immediate family member only. Okay, you have that, Ms. Keisha?
I think so. I may have to watch you again.
Okay, all right.
Is there anything else?
Not at this point, okay. All right, so on page thirty-one, I believe it is.
My next one's thirty about the car, group, group health insurance and.
Yes, the.
Take home.
Group health insurance. Okay, so somewhere around in there, the group health insurance and the, it says right now, probationary and regular employees are eligible for the group health program, but I think that we need to add in there and commissioners or elected officials, commissioners and mayor or and elected officials are eligible for the group health insurance, health program. And this should be, it, it says immediately upon being hired. When I was hired, I was not able to get health insurance and I do use the city's health insurance. I had to wait three months and then I, I, after a little while, I got the courage to ask, well, you know, why does it say upon being hired, but I had to wait three months and I was explained that it depends upon the insurance carrier, their contract. And so I'm understanding that at that time, Blue Cross Blue Shield made the, made the new hires wait or the newly elected officials wait three months. Now, capital health plan evidently lets them come on board immediately the day of hire or the day after. So, you know, we need to add or as stated in the insurance carrier's contract, so the employee that's hired knows whether or not they get, they're eligible for insurance the day of hire or they eligible insurance, for insurance, you know, in three months. So that way they would know to even ask someone, the administrator, when am I eligible for insurance?
Does the city use Blue Cross Blue Shield and?
No.
You just go with CHP now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's fine.
And add elected officials in there, probationary and regular employees and elected officials are eligible.
Yeah.
And then immediately upon being hired or as stated in the insurance carrier's contract. And then I would like to insert in there that employees not electing, electing insurance will have the option of receiving monthly reimbursement at the rate of, now, the rate of, right now, has, has been suggested at a hundred and thirty dollars a month as reimbursement. We have two, two people on the payroll receiving a hundred and thirty dollars a month and I'm told that that's calculated on what a Florida state employee pays for, is part of the family plan.
Well, it's one-eighty. The state of Florida pays one-eighty.
I think the fifty of it's for the employee and one-thirty is for the spouse, is that?
It's one-eighty, one-eighty for family plan. It's thirty for, in twenty-five and thirty for an individual.
But I want, I want to go ahead and tell you, the reason I break this up is that after I've, I've started signing checks, so I'm learning things now about signing checks and, and I realized, or I learned that they reimburse it a hundred and thirty a month. I don't have a problem with the reimbursement, it's less than paying.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and the county does do that also.
It sure does.
But recently, we, there was an elected official that was receiving reimbursement at two-hundred and twenty-five a month. So I know that the county has a designated amount that they reimburse for if they let not to, not to use the health insurance and I think we need to write that amount here in the, in the personnel policy.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and just to clarify that, he was not being reimbursed twenty, we, for the commissioners who are too old to be on our policy because it brings everybody up, as you know, the older you get, the more expensive it is our policy, it's incentive, we pay that, give them a subsidiary insurance to their Medicare or Medicaid. them a subsidiary insurance to their Medicare or Medicaid. This particular one, normally we transfer it to the city's name, but because he was not, he was not permanent, we didn't make any changes. That's the only reason it was reimbursed to his name instead of changing it over to the city's name, because we didn't know how permanent that. Had he been elected or something, then we would have done that.
Okay.
I have a question, too.
Because right now, Cal or Olivia is being paid out any day.
I don't want any of that. I got insurance.
And I do use the city's insurance.
And you should.
Okay, I have.
And that's like eighty of months, so that's.
My insurance is high and as I, the policy, and as I'm getting over, the policy is getting.
I'm paying just the way I am. Employees need to be reimbursed. We're offered health insurance with the state. I don't need to be reimbursed for health insurance. But the elected officials that don't, I want them to have insurance.
Or a subsidiary insurance.
Oh, that's fine.
Some of them have Medicaid and past.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I'm good with the way it is. It reads employees not electing insurance is option to receive monthly reimbursement of one thirty. But if you want to do it the way this, if their husband is with the state, it's one eighty. It doesn't matter to me, one thirty, one eighty.
It doesn't matter to me either.
I think one thirty is fair.
Yeah, it is.
It kind of pays for the, it's almost like they're still paying for their spouse, but the city's paying for their portion.
Mm-hmm. That's fine.
And it's saving us a lot of money.
Okay, Mr. Butler has the, wants to speak a moment.
Are you saying y'all are picking a fixed dollar amount and putting a policy versus a percentage? Have y'all considered?
A percentage of what, though?
If I, if my insurance is eight hundred dollars and I'm gonna get a hundred and thirty dollars, and it's gonna be a hundred and thirty dollars in how long and for where, if you figured out what a hundred and eighty, a hundred and thirty dollars is of your insurance amount, you could set it up as a percentage. And if health costs for the city goes up or down, their amount of cash, because both of you win, they get cash and you don't have to pay as much. So it might be easier to keep us from having this conversation.
Well, easier accounting wise.
I think the one thirty, let's leave it at the one thirty. If you do a percentage, it's gonna be. They're not, they're not getting enough percentage really.
There's nothing saying that this can't be addressed again down the road in some years, or, you know, four years or five years as things change. Okay, then, can we have a motion also yet?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, got to Commissioner Allen.
In my case, I don't get the group health insurance because we already have that through another policy. But I have applied for the drug benefit. And let's just hypothetically, let's say that cost me fifty dollars a month. I could be, would I be able to get the other eighty dollars?
No, it's one or the other.
One or the other, okay.
One or the other.
Thank you.
I'm sure that has to do with accounting, if the accounting would be complicated.
Yes, it would.
All right, may I have?
Whichever one benefits, but this is employees and commissioners.
Yes.
Because it just says employees.
Yeah, you're right. It should say anyone eligible for insurance, or, you know, employees and elected officials.
Let's have that too.
Okay, so may I have a motion then that refers to employees and elected officials not electing insurance will have the option of receiving monthly reimbursement at a rate of a hundred and thirty dollars a month?
Well, let's just go ahead and throw all that wording in too, if you don't mind, Mayor.
What?
The first, up there at the top where you added.
Okay, all right, just all of that. Probationary and regular employees and elected officials are eligible for the group health insurance program immediately upon being hired or as stated in the insurance carrier's contract. Employees and elected officials not electing insurance will have the option of receiving monthly reimbursement at the rate of a hundred and thirty dollars a month. May I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Massey. May I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Walden. All approved?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, the motion carries. I've heard employee benefits again on page thirty-one, benefits. I would like to insert the take-home vehicle program, add a new subject title, a take-home vehicle program. And I've seen this on a couple of other city websites, and this benefit is based on a position. And we know we have several now, about fifteen or so, Keisha said, that have a vehicle, and they take those vehicles home. So each employee participating in a take-home vehicle program should make certain his or her assigned vehicle is kept clean and in general working order. And not to say that they've got to work on it or do the maintenance, but, and their mileage will be required to be reported or the department head's gonna, you know, check their mileage once a month. But any ongoing maintenance or necessary repairs that are needed, they need to report that to their department head immediately. And not to let the vehicle get a disrepair and not report it and then end up not being able to use the vehicle because it's in a shop or something.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to approve that wording, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that carries.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't get the second. Was that Mathis?
Okay, yes, that was Commissioner Mathis. Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Mathis. On the, under incentive programs on page thirty-three, I'm suggesting to insert, and this is out of what pay raises that were given, given two and a half years ago, two years and four months ago, all employees, basically all of them under a certain pay grade, received a three thousand dollar annual pay increase, except one employee received five. That one employee received the additional two thousand because of the working with inmate groups. And if one employee has an extra two thousand annually for working with inmate crews, then all employees who work with inmate crews, I feel like, should receive that two thousand annually because that's a, that's dangerous or, you know, so I said to insert in, I don't know if this is the right term.
Yeah, because annually sounds like it's every year. You're adding that much every year.
No. So we need.
A one time.
You say get certified.
Once, right.
Okay, and are they called inmate crew leaders? Is that what they're called?
Yes.
Okay.
But they have to be certified.
Right, so a certified inmate crew leader who, whose department, I've got, who are Department of Corrections certified. And supervised inmate work crews will receive incentive pay based at the rate of.
For a merit raises normally what we call it in some like graduate schools.
Okay, but the one time, I have to put that one time, I guess.
Yeah, because this is annually, this is every year.
Yeah, no, no, it's just a one time.
Okay.
For certification, they'll receive two thousand dollars.
Uh, pay increase.
Yeah, I have a question.
Pay increase. Okay, this, Ms. Courtney says to call the pay increase.
The certification.
I have a question.
Okay.
Regularly, what does that mean?
A baby park?
What does regularly mean? A guy goes out and works out one week, does he get two thousand? Or is there a certain time that would decide regularly?
So what is regularly?
Needs to be clarified.
Well, if they, if we hire them on, if they get hired with the city work crew, the road department, if they can't have inmates, if they don't, if they reduce to have an inmate crew, they don't have a job.
I suppose into their job description.
Unless we, they're specifically hired not to.
You know what I'm saying? Because we got to have the inmate.
Well, right, but we're talking about city employees.
They am too.
Yeah.
That's what, this is city employees.
Okay, let's say Renee then.
Renee's not certified. She don't have inmate.
But she's a city employee.
She can't have a work crew.
It says inmate crew leader.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Department of Corrections certified.
Yeah, she can't have a work crew. Only people that certify they have.
Well, they can be certified and still not work a lot, and that's the question.
And generally, they have an inmate crew unless there's some type of a lockdown or rainy weather.
We have a lockdown right now, that's what y'all ain't seen.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's regular.
All right, may I, may I have a motion for this wording then?
I'll make the motion.
The motion, the wording's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. But to add this to the incentive programs.
Mm-hmm, yes.
May I have a motion to add this to the incentive program?
You do, that's my motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Allen. May I have a second?
A second?
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Massey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And the last one is just under the very last page of the personnel policy, just to insert the words, I also understand this, under the acknowledgement, I also understand this signed acknowledgement would be placed in my employee file. So on the very last page of the personnel policy, there's an acknowledgement there that says that, you know, I have received my, the copy of my personnel policies and I understand and agree that it's my responsibility to read, read, and it's got to, and familiarize myself with the contents. And it has to place it in full signature, and this needs to be detached from the personnel policy and put in their file with the signature and the date.
Sir, also.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so when you, when they're hired, you hires should do this and then maybe once a year with an evaluation or, you know, or just make sure they still review the personnel policy with them, okay?
Um, I got one more question. On the, what we done in the meal break, we just said to take it out. But just in case somebody has a question, I think it should be in there. It's under the definitions of hours work and everything. All you gotta do is put everybody's entitled to a one-hour lunch break. I mean, it needs to be in there somewhere on that page.
All right.
Just in case somebody.
Can I get just a motion for this, to insert this one last line under the acknowledgement page?
Oh, yeah, I'll make the motion.
All right, but we have a motion by Commissioner Massey. A second, please?
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Mathis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so we'll go back now to the one that we didn't, didn't struck here, under meal breaks. So you would like to make some wording on that, Commissioner Mathis?
Yeah, just in case somebody else comes in and wants to, you know, if somebody's got, don't understand it, or somebody has a question about it, they're scheduled to work eight and a half hour workday, everybody's entitled to a one-hour break. One thirty minutes is unpaid leave and thirty minutes is paid leave lunch break. Just put it in there in that, you know, where we've got it on page fourteen.
That, that, that doesn't make sense. If you're gonna do that, then you need to, they work from eight to five, not eight to four-thirty for an hour break.
If my, and I may interject, what you can do is allow the employees the option to utilize their two fifteen-minute breaks.
That's what we're doing.
I know, but if you verbiage it that way, the way you're saying it, sort of.
Oh, yeah.
If you tell them they've got an hour, they may use the hour and the fifteen-minute breaks.
I know what you're saying.
So how do, how do you make you like to word it?
For a scheduled eight hour, eight and a half hour workday, they get one thirty-minute unpaid meal break and two ten fifteen-minute breaks. And they can take those two ten fifteen, those two fifteen-minute breaks at any time to coincide with their lunch break if they wish to. Is that okay?
I buy law.
You have to look up labor laws.
I buy law. He made the law morning afternoon.
And that is really not right by labor laws. They should have, you know, should have a fifteen-minute break. It might be better just to.
Just leave it out?
Yeah. And let the administrator hand put on a.
That's what we're doing.
That's good.
Okay, then. Anything else? All right, then. Thank you all. Thank you. We're gonna move on then to discussion of members of the community action task force. Ms. Courtney, did you have anything you wanted to say about that?
Well, last month, we appointed the community action task force and we were short one. And we did get Ms. Bobby Winchester. So we just wanted to make the announcement that we do have our board and Ms. Bobby Winchester's gonna stand as our other member that we needed.
All right. Agenda here. Okay, then we're gonna move to new business finally. Discussion of possible action concerning promoting a part-time police officer to full-time.
I could address, there was one item that is dealing with the personnel policies that deals directly with the police department and that deals with this, that may apply to this item, is there is a provision in the personnel policy dealing with the police department that officers reside within a certain geographic area.
Fifteen miles.
Fifteen miles.
Some more than fifteen miles outside of city.
And the part-time officer that the chief is proposing does live outside of that.
Lives four point five miles beyond that.
So the question of the commission is, we would either need to include in any approval of this item, a waiver of that provision, but the kind of most, say, proper way to do it would be to actually change, change or remove that provision in the personnel policy.
Do we?
And any suggestions from the chief, of course. It's gonna be in the policy. He has to apply. Make an exception if we needed to. I mean, basically, the, actually, we can put that into the policy that on a case-by-case basis.
I don't want to change it altogether.
What, what do you suggest?
As far as the miles. Like I mentioned to Courtney, can we have them there to where we can make these exceptions under certain conditions? And right now, our condition is our, I think.
Do you have a suggestion?
And we're sure.
We can make it out.
Well, if we want to take it out, we get somebody that comes from Tallahassee or beyond and comes to fly, we don't have something in there. I don't want, I have somebody that far out.
Well, you know, I was about to say, that is, is that.
You gotta have.
Yeah, where you live is not a protected class or category or anything else. So you would, it would be at your discretion or any, you know, the chief's discretion. Chief discretion as far as.
Yeah, we can put it as the chief's discretion. Because that's also like, I mean, he's gonna.
Okay, I mean, we could, if, I know Courtney has talked to the chief about it, is that we can include a provision that says this condition may be waived upon city commission approval. We just need to apply it in a uniform fashion moving forward. That way it'd come up before the city commission.
That mileage doesn't apply to the part-time.
Doesn't apply.
But only to full-time. I don't see why, if he's been serving part-time and he's a good officer, that we might give some leeway.
And he's not rated, he's not, he's not an immunity certified. He's probably welcome to county certified.
He's a qualified man.
He's got eleven, eleven and a half years with Department of Corrections. He's got three and a half years of experience of, as a reserve officer will walk off. So he does have some experience.
Could we take the fifteen out and put reasonable?
Regular.
Twenty. I think the purpose of it was because they need a response time, a reasonable response time if everybody got called out in the open eye.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, if he's, if, if he's on-call, which, I mean, really, they're not on-call, they're on-call if you, he just lives across the Franklin County line. He could probably be here quicker than ever could be from up at Jeff Sanders, technically speaking. He can make it to the city hall probably before the assistant chief can make it from our. Technically speaking, he can make it to the City Hall probably before the Assistant Chief can make it from our house.
Okay, now do we, do we need to make a change, though, to the policy to, all right?
Yes, to allow for, and I know we're talking about different, different ways of doing that.
And your wording was to, um, be at the discretion of the commission if it's above fifteen miles or do you wanna leave it at fifteen or you wanna change it to twenty?
I'd say change it to twenty-five. I mean...
That's what the state is.
Yeah, twenty-five miles.
Now, I, you had mentioned before that if they're over the, you know, over, over, somewhere where a bridge may get washed out then.
Yeah, and there's, you know, again, like there are spots times you talked about and you said that I have right not to hire them and that's true. But then we had somebody walk that side of the...
Bye, bye. You're up.
I mean, there's things you need to think about before you put something in that position. I'd rather leave it like it is and just have the ability, you know, to make these exceptions over there.
I think I, I would suggest to go with the chief's suggestion at this point, so...
To basically make an exception on the distance from city limits, uh, subject to commission approval.
Chief approves.
Or the commission approves.
Um, unless, it's gonna give you some cover to have the commission...
Um, I did a question for them. Um, all the city police, they drive their car, they, they're assigned a vehicle. Okay, now what would be, why could, is there anywhere in our policy? Or you, this is weird. Um, that he couldn't drive his vehicle home because he lives in Waukesha? He lives on, there's nothing, there should be...
Oh, without liability.
Cause he's covered, he would be covered on our insurance regardless of where he drives.
As long as insurance covered, he should be fine.
Does your police policy have anything?
I mean, we need to get somebody in a senate to come to work. He's got, he's, he's not like he's newly certified and we need good help. And I've worked with the man, I mean, he works, he'll come to work. I mean, he's been working back-to-back now anytime he's needed. Has he told you no yet?
He's working nine-sixty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And if it's an emergency, you don't wanna go looking for your, uh, car?
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem with him driving his car home. I mean, it's right across the...
You're based from Illinois.
Across the, um, Penn, the Subchoppy Bridge.
Yes, I mean, as far as...
That would be the discretion of the chief on that, cause there's nothing in policy about that.
Yep, so we just have one motion on the change to the policy and then a second motion on, on promoting, promoting the officer to full-time.
I make a motion to promote, um, you know, to...
Chris, we need to change the policy.
We do need a motion to change.
Yeah, motion to change the policy. To make, to allow for an exception subject to commission approval.
Okay, I make a motion to allow an exception to the...
To the discharge.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, all opposed? Okay, uh, no, motion carries. Okay, uh, now we'll deal with promoting a part-time officer to a full-time position. May I have a motion to promote the, uh...
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Promote part-time to full-time.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, they're all seconding, uh, so, um, I have, we have a motion by Keith Walden to promote a part-time officer to full-time and a second by Commissioner Mathis.
What is his full name?
James, what's his name? James Bond Phillips.
James Bond? Welcome over.
No, it's not, it's not James Bond. How about introduce yourself, man?
Oh, that's hard.
Why don't you cut back over to the record now?
Was that a second by Massey?
Yes, that's by Mathis and by Massey too.
Yeah, we all. You want us to vote on it?
Yes, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed? Okay, so motion carries moving forward, sir.
I ain't gotta introduce yourself, man.
I'm turning it on.
Uh, like the chief said, I have eleven-and-a-half years in corrections, three-and-a-half with the Waukesha Sheriff's Office. And I've been working here for a little over a month, part-time. Uh, I've worked with Mr. Walden and also with Ms. Massey. You know, they're great people to work for. And I look forward to serving the citizens of Carabelle, Frithville, Gav.
Very good. Moving forward, we appreciate you. And so that was two motions there for that one item. All right, we're gonna move on to item two under new business discussion and possible action concerning member appointments to the Planning and Zoning Board. Um, I will tell you that I learned that two members of the Planning and Zoning resigned last evening after their planning and zoning, uh, excuse me, that's Tuesday, after their planning and zoning. Uh, Ms. Leslie Cox and Mr. Steve Allen resigned, so that leaves two members. And, and maybe we're, uh, maybe we should just go ahead and maybe think about, excuse me, is there sidebar conversation?
No.
Okay, should we go ahead then and think about, um, uh, maybe just replacing the entire board? Do we need to replace the entire board? Uh, we have only two members left and both of those members have been on, on the Planning and Zoning for...
More than a year.
For six, eight years.
Who are they?
Um, that's, um, Ms. Chester Reeves and Ms. Patty Lee. That's all that's left on the Planning.
Do they wanna be on it?
I think Patty does. I think Chester's about done.
Okay, well, leave Ms. Patty on it.
But we would need to advertise or I would ask that the commissioners, uh, each commissioner reach out to their constituency to see if they can find, if we're gonna, we need to, we really, we've got three people that have, um, come up and, and, and sent letters in that said they would like to be on the board. Uh, Ms. Susan Usher, Mr. James Newton and Ms. Jill Reese, they're all in the, in the room tonight. You need identification. Um, but, um, we, so if we leave Ms. Patty Lee on board, that gives four. We really, we, that's only a forum, it's a board of seven. So we need, we need three more members.
It says each one, each commissioner shall appoint a member and then y'all vote on the other two.
On alternates.
On the two alternates, every, it's gotta be unanimous. And then two of the members are two years and three of them, three years.
So each one of us needs to find one.
Everybody needs to find one plus two more. But now we do have three, um, people in here speaking that are, that are ready to be appointed.
Good.
Okay, can I go ahead and appoint one?
Uh, maybe, all right, uh, do we need to appoint by motion or how?
Yeah, or what would happen is the commissioner would nominate and then, um... And then, okay, if you want, okay, if, if, yeah, if, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Is if individual commissioners, including mayor commissioner, wants to nominate somebody, we just make their nomination and then we, we can vote on all of them together if obviously someone's objectionable to somebody else.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Newton, would you just identify yourself so everyone can see who, I mean, you, you don't have to come up and speak if you don't want to. We just wanna know who you are. And he does sit on the, he's a SERC member and, and sits on the Camp Gordon Johnson, um, Board of Directors, is that correct?
Yes, I volunteer at Camp Gordon Johnson. We see him one day a week.
Oh, that's a no for me.
And I volunteer at the, um, White House.
Okay, volunteers of the White House.
I like to volunteer.
Okay, all right. And then we have Ms. Susan Usher and she's with, um, Seacrest Realty. She's familiar with the area, so...
She's also a SERC person.
Oh, she is, okay. No, she's a SERC person, all right. Then we have, um, Ms. Jill Reese right here. And we've all seen her at the meetings and, and they all, they all come to, to our meetings and we're glad that you do that. So, um, then does someone want to nominate any of one of these, these people who are willing to volunteer?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, make, make yours. Mr., Commissioner Allen, do you want to nominate?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and nominate Jim since he's the first one stood up. That's the only reason.
Well, I called, I called him out, so, okay. Um, would someone else like to nominate someone?
I'm gonna nominate Ms. Jill.
Okay. And would someone else like to...
I'll nominate Ms. Jill.
Uh, um, Ms. Susan Usher, okay.
Does somebody wanna nominate Ms. Patty?
Go with Ms. Patty.
She's not here.
She's not here?
She usually is.
What's her name again?
Ms. Patty Lee.
Ms., I will.
You know her.
Ms. Patty Lee. I don't even know the lady, though. No, no, that's good enough.
Uh, she's served on Gordon out for about six years. So that's, uh, Commissioner Allen for Mr. Jim Newton.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Massey for Ms. Jill Reese, Commissioner Mathis for Ms. Susan Usher, Commissioner Walden for Ms. Patty Lee. Uh, so we...
What about Chester?
Oh, oh, I thought, I thought maybe, well, he hasn't, he hasn't, he hasn't resigned.
We got one more?
And then we still need two more.
I know.
And we can deal with that at the next meeting.
Okay, well, um, then I'll nominate Chester Reeves.
What about their terms?
Well, if he wants to resign, if he feels, then we'll, we'll, we'll try to...
I meant the new ones. Do the, who gets the two-year, who gets the...
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to do that?
We're lucky to have him served.
Yeah.
Let them decide that at their board meeting. How about that? Thank you. Um, so how do we wanna try and get two more members? First, we want to have these commissioners reach out for...
Oh, sorry.
Or if there's anybody else.
Okay, so, all right, we need to have a vote then on these nominations. Uh, I need a motion to vote for these, uh, to approve these nominations, please.
I move to approve.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Mathi, Mathis, Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Mathis. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. And then we'll just have each commissioner please reach out and try to find two more members to sit on the Planning and Zoning. We have five members, but we really need two more cause a lot of time, this is volunteer, many times they can't, they can't make it. The meetings are when, Ms. Keisha?
Third Thursday.
They have to live within the city limits.
Third Thursday within, at four-thirty, have to live within the city limits. Or, or...
We would prefer that.
Just one member.
Uh-huh, now, Ms. Patty Lee does not, but all the others that we have now do and it would be...
It also says y'all can elect your own secretary to take minutes today.
Okay, I nominate Keith.
All right, let's move on to item three, uh, under new business, approve, disprove, uh, special exception for 108 Southeast Meridian Street to allow for a mobile home and R1 zoning. Is there anyone here from the Planning and Zoning Board to, um, give us the recommendations and I see not?
I can summarize those real quick.
Okay, do you want to do both at the same time?
That would be good.
Okay, and that would be item four as well for 904 Southeast Avenue D.
Um, what these are is, is just simply a special exception for mobile home to be placed in this R1 zoning district in two different locations in the city. The certified mailers went out. There was no one attending the meeting who objected either in person or in writing. The P and Z board found that the placement of mobile homes in this area would be compatible with adjacent, uh, properties. But there were some mobile homes in the area already and, um, that it wasn't, you know, it was compatible with the, with the use, residential use in the areas. And they recommended approval.
Okay, I make a motion to approve special exception for 108 Southeast Meridian Street and for 904 Southeast Avenue D for mobile home, R1 zoning.
All right, can she do that, uh, both items for one, with one motion?
Yep, for special exceptions for 108 Southeast Meridian.
And item four, she's doing item three and four. Four, you understand that, Mr. Harp? She's doing one motion for two items, okay?
It's the same thing.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Massey to approve special exception at 108 Southeast Meridian and special exception at 904 Southeast Avenue D. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Walden. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, that, that carries for both of those, um, locations. Okay, then, um, the final item under new business and discussion of possible action regarding issues surrounding Carabelle Thompson Airport included but not limited to claim of back wages owed to subcontractor for services of airport manager. And I see the airport manager is here this evening. Uh, would, would you like to come forward, Mr. Nobles? Two hours later, we're here.
That's all right. For those of you that don't know me, I am Mark Nobles and as of January 2010, I have been the airport manager out here at Carabelle Thompson Field. And I'm losing my voice, so you might wanna mark that down in your calendar when Mark Nobles loses his voice. You better get your lottery tickets. Let me first bring you up to speed on where we are on JPA's. Uh, the last meeting, which I was not here for, uh...
Mr. Nobles, are we, are we here to discuss the grants or...
No, ma'am, I, I put, I asked to be put on the agenda to address the commission regarding the airport.
Uh, I asked you to come to...
That was the last meeting, ma'am, and then I was asked not to come.
I asked you to come to the meeting last, I sent word by the commissioner to come to the meeting last, uh, December the third, I believe, was our meeting and you declined. We're here now, we're going to discuss...
What commissioner was that, ma'am?
The commission meeting, December...
What commissioner did you ask to come?
I asked Ms. Courtney.
Courtney, when you contacted me, did you ask me to come or not to come?
Not to come because we had a long agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, what, did I come to you and ask to be put on the agenda for tonight? Okay, so that's where I stand.
Okay, and, and he's coming to discuss...
I was asked by both of y'all to put it on the agenda.
All right, so go ahead and tell us about the grants.
Thank you, okay. The last meeting that I was not present for, uh, you passed to change a ninety thousand dollar JPA grant that was intended to conduct a survey for a GPS approach into the airport. It's highly unlikely that we would get an approach just because the hangars interfere with the approach path to begin with. So those monies were asked to be put over into the moving the fuel tank, which that's already got a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars in it. Uh, that's still not enough money for moving the tank. Uh, the engineer's estimate for moving it is somewhere in the, I've got it right here, instead of giving you in the neighborhood, I want to tell you what it is. Okay, the engineer's showing two hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. There's a lot of, a lot of work to be done to move that tank, but the reality is the tank has got to be moved because it's, uh, there's already been a couple of airplane strikes against the hangar trying to get in and out there. So we've kinda got to avoid anybody getting hurt as a result of it. Uh, we've got another JPA for upgrading six hangars that we have that are in dire need of, of upgrade of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. We've got a JPA for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a new box hangar. And then we've got seventeen thousand dollars of safe money that we could use towards fencing gates, whatever. I can't stress enough how important it is to move that fuel tank because if you get congestion of other aircraft parked out on the ramp area, you're, you risk somebody getting hit by an airplane and that's not something any of us want to see happen. So the tank does entirely need to be moved. So, uh, that being said, after the last meeting, uh, I was contacted by several people that was like, wow, what have you done? Uh, that I was, I was, uh, picked on a little bit. Well, I went back, you know, and I was upset until I saw the, your YouTube buddy over there.
That's my husband.
Right, but, uh, till I saw his video and I was like, well, I don't really disagree with her completely. Uh, I do disagree with your fact finding that, uh, you know, you had said that you had wrote a check for thirteen hundred dollars or signed a check for thirteen hundred dollars earlier that day, which it was, and it was eleven hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
And that, uh, I had, uh, called... And that, uh, I had, uh, called you up and I had actually ordered up this check, uh, and called you to come sign it, or that I would bring it by your home and sign it. And that's true, I did. Uh, but there has never been any rhyme or reason to me receiving a check as far as how and when, how and when I got paid. I would call Courtney and I'd ask her, can I get a check? And she'd say yes, and she'd take care of it, and usually that day it'd be done. Uh, I had called her the day before, and, uh, Commissioner Allen had already come by and signed the check. You hadn't, and she asked, or Miranda, I think it was, said, well, I've got her number if you want to call her, she's at home. And I was thinking, well, okay, because I've taken them by Mayor Messer, took them by Raymond, uh, you know, in the past. And you, uh, insinuated that you didn't do business that way, that you didn't have people come by your house to sign city checks and whatnot, and that's fine and dandy. I did not know that that was your policy and that it changed. I heard later that, yes, you do that, and you did that with fire department for checks and such. Well, I mean, once, twice, whatever. When you, you presented a little bit beyond factual in your meeting, in the meeting, that I wasn't in here for, and I was kindly disappointed in that. But the rest of it, I don't have a problem with. Uh, when I came for the city commission here in two thousand and ten, uh, it was at the request of one of the commissioners. And I'm not going to say Robert's Rules of Order was something to be expressed as, as well played out that night. But it's not my duty to come up with a job description. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think there should be a job description, but it wasn't my responsibility. As a matter of fact, uh, if you go back to the minutes, I don't know if the minutes have everything in it, but when I tried to discuss it, I was told to be quiet, that I talked too much. So, and I don't know, you probably remember that night, I don't know, you were here.
I was here, it's all a blur.
Right. But anyhow, my love and desire for that airport is not something that started that night. You can go back and look at the minutes of September the fifth of nineteen ninety. I came before the city commission to lease two thousand foot of the airport, and that lease was approved. Uh, never did get a lease agreement, but-
I believe it says in that minutes, uh, it was, it's a proposal. That proposal was approved.
Okay, well, maybe that's what it was.
Yes, sir, it was a proposal.
I've got it right here.
Commissioner Waltham moved to approve Mr. Nobles' proposal.
Okay.
And so that they didn't approve the lease, and that's approved.
Well, anyhow, what that does is that negates it. I've been interested in that airport quite a while.
We understand.
And I've always been interested in it, I always will be. However, what I'm doing out there, I do at the leisure of the city. And I had, I've told each of the commissioners, I got all of them to come out to the airport and such, show them around and everything, and I told each of them that tonight I would be resigning. I've been asked by several not to. So what I am doing is offering up my resignation. And if the commission wants my resignation, that's fine, it's there. I, but I, I want that airport to continue to be a good airport.
We do, we want that, we want it to grow, we want it to, uh, bring some tourism in here.
Okay.
We certainly do. I brought it up to the TDC board, I want to have the TDC have a direct link to an airport site that we, uh, have a page on our own website.
Right.
Here at the City of Carabelle.
Well-
But, um, you know, we've got, we've got some, uh, issues that, uh, need to be, need to be worked out.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what-
If we continue with the airport manager.
Okay, well, uh-
No, no, sir, I'm conducting this meeting.
Okay, you're ready, ma'am.
You continue with what you have.
May I have, ma'am, permission to speak?
Let, let, uh, let Mr. Nobles continue.
There, there was an error there that I needed, would like to correct.
What is that?
The, uh, minutes of that meeting of September ninth, it says Commissioner Waltham moved to approve Mr. Nobles' proposal, the motion was seconded by Commissioner Coke and Terry.
So the proposal was seconded and carried, yeah.
Oh, I, I misunderstood it, I thought you said it was not. That was a twenty-five year lease of the proposal. My mistake, ma'am, sorry.
They approved the proposal, sir.
But it was a proposal and it was accepted.
But there was no lease, uh, you know, they did not, they did not draw up a contract, there was no contract. Don't know why they didn't do a contract.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyhow, so anyhow, I would like to offer up my resignation and let the commissioners, I, I really wish one of you would, uh, make a motion to it, one of you would second it, and then vote on it. And if, if it's the pleasure of the board that I, I'm no longer the manager, that's fine, I understand that, I don't have a problem with it. But I'm not going to air dirty laundry or witch hunts in a public meeting. You've been to that airport one time.
That's right.
Well, no, you've been there twice, you've been there once while I was there, and you were out there once doing a survey on equipment.
On the fire department area.
And yet you've never decided, hey, you know what, I need to ask Mark about what he does. I need to ask Mark about anything. It's, it's, you want to bring it into a city commission meeting, and I'm not about to allow you that opportunity. You are not going to have a witch hunt tonight.
Sir, you can't tell me what I, I need to-
No, ma'am, I can't tell you, but I can, I can walk out of this at any time.
I need to discuss and bring some issues to these, these board members here.
Yes, ma'am.
I cannot talk to them out of the sunshine.
No, ma'am, you can, but you can talk to me. If you have issues about what I'm supposed to be doing, instead of blindsiding me in a meeting-
I don't, I don't have issues about what you're supposed to be doing. I cannot, I'm not experienced in airport operations, I don't have a vendetta against you, I'm not going to develop a list of duties for a manager, airport manager. We could, we could certainly appoint an advisory board of experienced aviators who could give us a, a list of duties or refer us to a place to find a list of duties. You're experienced, you could have developed a list of duties yourselves, a list of some standard operating procedures, but there are some things, and I'm not on a witch hunt, but there are some, uh, things that, uh, that really need to be brought forth to these, these commissioners that they need to know and understand. And, um, I, I have talked with our, um, accountant, our CPA, uh, Mr. Mark Payne, and, um, we, the city cannot, and now, now this is not in the minutes, the minutes here from January seventh, two thousand and ten, um, discusses, uh, discussion of possible action concerning the hiring of an airport manager, Mark Nobles. Mark Nobles addresses the commission about becoming the airport manager, the city clerk and administrator, highly recommend him in his position. The pay would be fifteen thousand, nine hundred a year, which would be paid out of hangar rent, leaving three thousand in the account for maintenance. Uh, Commissioner Brown makes the motion to approve, and Commissioner Allen seconds, and all are in favor. Um, nowhere in this discussion or motion does it talk about that, uh, Mr. Nobles is going to be compensated free rent, hangar rent. And, um, our CPA says, and this needs to come out to the board members, they need to understand this, our CPA says that there's a large statute that will not allow the city to compensate free rent or free anything to any subcontractor or, um, or employee in, in lieu of pay. That, um, that rent has to be, that has to be picked up in compensation and, and recorded on, on your, um, your, your taxes, and the city has to report that. Um, a subcontractor cannot, or a city employee cannot receive any discounted rate other than what's offered to the public. And, uh, now, tell me if I'm wrong, but you've been, uh, receiving, uh, a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month as, as a credit to discount counted rate, that's why your pay is one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars instead of the thirteen hundred or whatever that I mentioned because, and at that time, I didn't know that you got free hangar rent when I said the thirteen hundred last week. I did not know that you received hangar rent in lieu of compensation. Um, the, right now, you, uh, the, the CPA has you shown, uh, as a police officer on a regular payroll and an active employee. In fact, I signed your Christmas bonus check. So he, uh, Mr. Nobles is an active employee, and, um, you, the CPA says that it, it's not good to have an active employee hired as a subcontractor, that this muddies the water, that you can't, you can't delineate, you know, where, when is he the active employee and when is he the subcontractor? Um, the CPA cannot find any indication, but now they just did a preliminary search, they, they, well, the assistant, Gary Spar, worked on it for about three hours, trying to find a ten ninety-nine form, uh, for, um, that has been issued to the airport manager since twenty ten regarding, uh, your, your services, your pay. And I believe, uh, you've been paid about fifty-four thousand dollars since twenty, twenty ten. I have, Miranda gave me a list of your, your payments here. Um, you've never submitted invoices. Uh, that, that is a definite problem, the CPA has a definite problem with that. There's not, there's not a valid contract, all we have is, once again, just the minutes from the meeting. Uh, the CPA says that, um, and you had, you told me, uh, last month, and then, uh, Miranda actually wrote back here, uh, that she, pretty much calculates that, that twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty is potentially owed, owed to you in back payments. The CPA says that if there's no valid contract, then back payments are, are not owed. Do you have on file, uh, with the city, uh, an ID, business ID for tax records?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay. And do you have on file with the city any, uh, uh, general liability insurance that shows that you're covered for general liability when you're out there at the airport working for some, as a subcontractor?
No, ma'am, I do not.
And do you keep hangar lease agreements?
No, we do not. As a matter of fact, uh, I've spoken with, uh, Mr. Hartman in the past that we needed to get some hangar lease agreements, and, well, we've just never gotten together on them.
Okay, even when requested by tenants, do you keep hangar lease agreements?
Excuse me, uh, never been requested by tenants.
All right, and but, uh, the, the, I understand, but I could be wrong because I don't know, you know, I'm not, uh, an experienced aviator, I've never worked in the aviation field. Yes, I did, I was a flight attendant for eight years, sorry. Okay, um, but that still doesn't make me an airport operator. Um, you, I believe the FAA requires if you're going to receive state and federal DOT funding for the airport, that hangar lease agreements, but I could be wrong, but I do know that life rents must be charged to each tenant, and if there's a hangar without power, those are certain rents, if there's a hangar with power, those are certain rents. Uh, your credit for a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month for a hangar with power is actually a discounted rate that the CPA says that the city cannot give discounted rates to any city that employee or subcontractor. Something that's different than what's offered to the, to the public. And, um, I, I'm curious to know, and as is the CPA, the missed back payments here, um, and it's hard to calculate how many back, missed back payments there are, uh, because some, a, a couple of times you took two payments, uh, for two thousand, three hundred dollars, and one time, the very first time you took a three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar payment. But all these missed payments, have they been recorded, uh, as, uh, accounts payable? The, the CPA would like to know, that's not for you, that's for office staff and, and for the commissioners, so that this shows on a financial statement as a liability. So, you know, never presenting an invoice, receiving free rent compensation for five years, and, and that's not allowable. You know, no rent and no valid contract, no, no real agreed to list of duties, no tax ID. Uh, at this point, no, no receiving of, uh, ten ninety-nine forms as far as the, the accountant can tell at this point. Uh, no, uh, general liability insurance. Um, our, if I, you know, I just did my simple calculations, I'm not a, an accountant either. Um, right now, uh, according to this minutes right here, your pay would be fifteen nine a year, plus three thousand dollars a year left over for maintenance. That equals eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars annually, times five years, that's ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars in total revenues to the, for the airport that, that the eighteen nine annually. Your payments to date, on this, on this printout, your payments to date have been, excuse me, fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Minus, plus the fifteen thousand dollars of, of, um, maintenance, that should leave from the fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty, from the fifteen thousand, and the fifteen thousand from the nine four five, should leave twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars in our board and airport account. Right now, this morning, the balance was eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. So there's a fifteen thousand, twenty-five dollar deficit. And, um, are back hangar rents due? Our finance clerk does not know if back hangar rents are due because she doesn't, you know, she accepts the rents when people come in and pay the rent, she posts the rents, but, uh, she, she doesn't know how much back rents are due because there's not lease agreements and, um, I don't know, maybe by now, this past couple of weeks, she has a list of people who, who are, um, paying rent, or who have hangar rent agreements out there. The September thirtieth financial statement noted that four thousand, two hundred dollars was unearned in hangar rent, but that was September thirtieth, now we're in January of twenty-six thousand, uh, twenty sixteen, you know, how much are we past due in hangar rent? I don't know. I, I think that before we move further with Mr. Nobles, um, all of this needs to be untwisted by our CPA. Whether or not he can continue as an active employee, where's his business ID, the number, um, you know, his ten ninety-nine forms, um, you know, his first line of duty, I'm sure he knows, is to operate airports safely and efficiently, and there's safety issues out there that, uh, people that have leased hangars have brought forth to me, they wish to remain anonymous. There's security issues out there. Efficiency hasn't been demonstrated, uh, in my opinion, because it, it appears that there's, there's some type of a deficit, deficit, it's written up in our financial statement that no fuel inventory has been kept, and we would expect Mr. Nobles to bring his own expertise to the board. But, um, you know, we have security issues, we've got a security gate out there that, uh, it seems like that a lot of people are allowed to enter, we don't have a list of who has, uh, gate pass cards. Do we have a list of who's been issued gate pass cards, who has, who gets in there? The, um, the small walk gate is left unlocked for anybody to go in there and, at any time. The gate, the airport should be secure and for people in there for aeronautical purposes only, and maintenance of the aircraft, or maintenance of the airport only. People shouldn't be allowed to come in there, uh, at any time. I mean, uh, I, I understand that our, uh, automatic gate that was fifty thousand dollars that you had put in is really not being maintained, the chain is rusted, it makes a lot of noise when going back and forth. I, you know, is the fencing parameter of the, of the, um, airport, is that checked routinely? Do you keep a log on these routine checks of the fencing of the airport? Now, also, on the gates, and the gate being unlocked, and no list of who has the pass cards. The airport, like I said, is for aeronautical and maintenance of the airplanes and airport only. Hiding of wildlife of any type is not allowed at the airport by FAA. Baiting of wildlife for any reason, hobby photography for any reason, painting of artwork, playing football, meat processing, you know, these things are not allowed at, at the airport and should not be conducted. If, if, if there's a, a wildlife that need to be killed out there, then that is for an emergent, immediate danger to aircraft or personnel, and I'm sure you know that. And if that has to happen, then that needs to be reported and reported to the FWC. Any other wildlife issues would, would be managed, managed by the FWC. There's safety issues out there, when I was out there on October the fifteenth, there was a broken split four by four support post, post on the step hand railing. Has that been repaired?
No.
Right, okay. Has a NOTAM, which is a notice to air, has that been posted during the entire period the fuel system has not been operating?
Uh, the fuel system does not require NOTAM. A NOTAM was filed for the runway beacon, but not for the fuel system.
Okay. So, um, so pilots can come in expecting to, uh, be able to fuel up and the fuel system is on?
No, ma'am, we don't advertise fuel.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Is the airport li- license correct or current?
Yes, it is.
Is it, is it posted, is the current license?
It is posted.
When did that happen? When did that happen?
Well, it stays there. It's in that little office.
I understand that the current license that's posted now is dated 2014.
Well, I haven't looked to see if someone may have tampered with it, taken the other license.
The old?
The old one was underneath the new one. Yes, the old one is underneath the new one. They're stacked up.
Right now, the license that's available to be seen is 2014.
Okay. I'll have to take your word for it. I don't check it daily.
Okay. Are airport, are the hangars being utilized for storage and maintenance of aircraft for aeronautical purposes? I understand.
All but mine.
Okay. There's household items and restaurant equipment and other, other things going on out there. And I, I think that, I believe that all the tenants are being charged the same monthly rate, except that you, you somehow negotiated a rate of $175 a month when you're being compensated on a monthly basis, but you had negotiated $175 a month, which is pay upfront annually for a hangar without power. But you occupy a hangar with power and you're being compensated monthly, but yet you want, you want the annual rate. But you can't even be reimbursed. You can't even get free rent. The CPA says.
No, no. And this free rent, I disagree with you on that. What was going on was, it was $1,325 a month that was supposed to be paid to me. And I told them, well, just go ahead and take my rent out of it. Miranda and I, we just figured out, I had no idea. I didn't even think about the fact, because I never paid attention to that, what was being taken out, how much, for how long, or whatever. But I've got you that invoice set up. And in here, it shows a, an addition of the $25 a month difference for the amount of time that I've had that hangar, however many months it's been, 27 months or so. Shows the additional amount in there to be taken out of what's owed me. And, but you say I can't do it that way. I don't know. You just do it however we gotta do it. I don't know.
I'm just reporting what the, what the CPA has said. I mean, this is, this is some serious housekeeping issues. And now, you know, somehow after the fact, now you have decided that you want to pay or be accredited in an additional 25. I don't even, I don't even understand it. It's just getting so complicated. Do you have any idea how much fuel remains in the tank?
No ma'am, I do not.
Okay. And I know that there, it can't, it's not, it's not been corrected. The, there's an electrical problem on the fuel tank, which whenever the firehouse or the lighting detector uses electricity, then the fuel tank is being pumped at that time. It sends the fuel tank shuts down. So, but I know that the fuel tank is not operating, so I'm sure that the, the electrical problem hasn't been corrected and just waiting for relocation.
And you're wrong. It's been corrected. It was corrected by, what's the name of the electric company?
Alternative?
Alternative Electric fixed that a few months back. Several months back.
All right. Is the fuel storage tank registration current and posted?
Well, I don't know that we even have one.
Okay. And do you have any kind of a written policy to cover basic operations of the fueling system, like ordering and receiving fuel, frequency of testing, measuring fuel quality, fuel station maintenance, fuel response, accountability of fuel and the funds generated?
No ma'am.
Okay. And so then there's the accounting issues, which, you know, we could go over all of this, but I basically, you know, went over it pretty quick already. I don't really want to, you know, we don't have to go over it all, all again. And I think that we, I think that we need to, my opinion is, just let the, hire the CPA to do an audit to see where we stand. Immediately repair the lock gate. Immediately get a list of names who have pass cards. And, and those who are really not authorized to be at the airport, those, they, they need to be, the pass cards need to be confiscated. It's possible at this point in time, we may need to eliminate the airport manager position. Streets and roads has the, has the assigned duty of mowing out there and, and cleaning the grounds. And actually, when I went out there on October the 15th, one, one tenant had complained to me that the restroom hadn't been cleaned in a long time. Mr. Nobles had cleaned it that morning. It looked, it looked nice. I could smell a pine saw. And it looked good. It looked clean. And he said he had cleaned it that morning. I said, well, who cleans it in the past or how long has it been cleaned? It had been a long time since it had been cleaned. It was cleaned that day for me to, to come out there. But I've received quite a few complaints. They want to remain anonymous since being elected mayor. As commissioner, I knew in the back of my mind, there was an airport manager. I thought you, you know, I, I felt that you could manage it. But now, since these, these complaints have been brought to me, I need to, I need to let the other commissioners know. There's no other way I can let them know. I, you know, I think, I actually feel like we should appoint an advisory board. There are some folks in the area that would be willing to sit on an advisory board. Maybe it would be a temporary board, 18 months, or maybe, maybe we could have a board for, this advisory board could advise the staff and they could advise the commission on things that need to be done or don't need to be done. They could certainly advise on the list of duties for an airport manager. Maybe all that we need out there, I don't know. I'm not experienced at it. We could certainly subcontract out the, when the fuel tank gets moved and it's ready to be operational, we could subcontract out the fuel tank operations to an independent, that independent purchase the fuel, manage the fuel tank, just on all the things that I just said, and, and make the profits off of it. That would take out, take the city out of the fuel tank, out of the fuel business and trying to manage inventory on that aircraft fuel, which is very expensive. So, you know, I, it's, it's up to the pleasure of the board, though. I brought it, I brought it to your attention. And, and Mr. Nobles has asked for someone to motion for his resignation. Well, I would say if Mr. Nobles wants to resign, Mr. Nobles should resign, just as we had two P and Z members resign.
Can I speak?
I have a question.
Okay.
He's often in line. Do we have to make a motion to accept that? Or he, I mean, you just.
No, that's my, my, my purpose in that was that I work at the leisure of the board. I work for you guys. It is my purpose. However, when this all came up, she, she wasn't even around when, when this first happened. When this first happened, I didn't have a clue what I was expected to do out there. I had gone to Courtney and Keisha daily, asking them, what exactly do I need to be doing to make sure I was doing the right thing? Now, all of these, I'm not saying there's no faults. I've got my faults, no doubt about that. One of your tenants, that the worst thing I did was skip the hangar list to see to it that he got a hangar. But.
Is that the one that's getting free electricity off the city?
Well, he's.
Well, that's, that's another thing. In fact, do you, do you have your own power bill out there?
I do.
And do you have, everyone's supposed to have their own renter's style and insurance on those.
There's one that's got a drop cord running the city tower.
Yes.
I've seen the drop cord run there.
Yeah.
And what, what, is that all you know?
Well, what, what it boils down to.
Because I asked him, because some of the hangars weren't even attached to the ground.
I was showing them the hangars that needed, needed to be worked on out there. There is one that they make coffee out of it. There's, you know, it's not like there's a major theft of power. They're not, you know, running a casino in there or anything like that or run up a power bill. But anyhow, that's neither here nor there. That's, it's.
They could though, you know. They could go on.
Well, absolutely.
I just saved the drop cords and then there was some hangars that weren't attached. But that, that what was done by somebody here, I hear.
Commissioner Allen had.
Yes.
Just to answer Commissioner Walden's question, I'll answer Commissioner Walden's question just so everybody understands, is, as Mr. Nobles said, he serves at the pleasure of the commission. If he's tendered his resignation, obviously, there can be two, two paths. One, a motion to accept it and have a vote on that motion. If, if there's no motion, then it is not accepted.
Can I make a motion not to accept?
That's unnecessary.
Okay.
You wouldn't.
I've known Mr. Nobles for some time and I, and I realize that there are a lot of problems. I think we can straighten these problems out. And I would like to see us get together and come up with a management plan and a procedures to deal with all these things that you brought up, the CPA, get everything on board and above line so that everything is operated in a, in a legal, scriptural way. I think that this was not, as Mr. Nobles mentioned, and is taking over this job, and I think he's done a great job. How much money have you raised in grants? Do you have it a figure on hand?
I don't know.
I know it's quite a bit. And I think his knowledge of the airport would be ashamed to lose that. I think his, his love for the airport would be ashamed to lose that. So I would not be in favor of, of accepting his resignation. So.
I'd say it, Mr. Cal Allen, because $15,000 a year is hardly no money for a airport manager. And he was doing the best he could, and then we can't go without one. I mean, we can't just go without one. Do we need a?
It needs to get its valid, valid one. Why not?
Why not?
Why not? I was doing it before and I don't want to do it anymore.
No, I do know that staff doesn't want to, want to manage the airport. Grants many times can manage themselves. I want to say that there is a Northwest Contingering Florida Aviation, Aviation Planning Process, and that needs quarterly. A representative from Appalachian Cola Airport is there every year for 30 years. A representative from Appalachian Cola Airport is there. Mr. Nobles could certainly attend that, or Courtney could attend it, or I could attend it, but I'm, I'm busy. Courtney is busy. So, so if we have an advisory board, someone from the advisory board could, could attend that. And that is where they get their input and they make their networking connections and really bring the grant money in. The grant money that we receive here in Tarralville is almost what I would term like leftover grant money. They're small grants. Appalachian Cola Airport receives huge grant money. And.
Huge airport.
They, they, it's, it's a larger county airport. But the grants, just like grants that we receive here, tend to manage themselves. The grant engineer, the engineer that's managing the grant is paid a fee to come out and oversee the projects that are done. And, you know, there, there is a little bit of work to it. A lot of the paperwork, Courtney does that paperwork herself here in the office on managing the grants. So, you know, I, I really think that all of it needs to be put on hold until we've worked out the legality issues of whether or not the grant, if, if our, our grant used as compensation, maybe Mr. Nobles may owe, owe the city money. The CPA, just from what we talked about, said that Mr. Nobles owes the city money for back hangar rent for compensation that he was given for rent over the past five years that is not allowable by Florida statute. And Mr. Nobles most likely didn't know it. I'm sure that our staff didn't know it, or they would have not allowed that in the first place. But now that we know it.
I didn't know.
We, we need to get these things, we need to get these things worked out. Mr. Nobles is an active employee of record. And, you know, we can't have, you know, maybe I want to be the airport manager. Maybe, maybe some of our other employees want the opportunity to be airport manager. We have an active, active airport man, employee who's also operating in subcontract. That's two, that muddies the waters. He hasn't been receiving 1099 forms. He doesn't have a tax ID. And he didn't know he was supposed to have these things, evidently, and our staff didn't know it. But now we're bringing it out. And as Mr. Commissioner Allen said, we need to get these things worked out. We need, you know, have an advisory board that certainly helps and let us know for sure what do we really, what do we really need out there. Now, if all we're collecting is $18,900 a year in rent, then the airport's not self-sustaining because we're gonna pay for paying $15,900 for an airport manager when it's a small airport.
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
Mark, I've been out there. You do a good job. But this whole thing is a mess. It needs to be, I don't care if you're the airport manager or not, but we need to start from ground zero and get this thing right.
That's the part.
Digging it out, discussing your salary, your responsibilities. I, I think we should just start over. And if you demand, when it's all said and done, fine. But we need to get it on paper. What you responsible for, what they're gonna pay you. That's, that's my.
I agree with you. That's the way it should have been from the beginning, but it wasn't. And, and, you know, I'm being held accountable for there not being any job description, for there not being any of what you have mentioned. And.
And you're holding me accountable.
No, I'm not holding you accountable.
No, I have nothing to do with it.
I, I did, the only thing I knew to do was to go to the ladies that had been doing it and saying, okay, what do I need to do? What do I need to do? And they helped me tremendously.
They don't have to stand, they don't, they have help. But I, I can tell you, they, they're not airport operators either. So they can't.
Really?
So, well, here we are. And we just.
At any rate, my, my resignation offer still stands. I would like.
And I, I would suggest that actually, once we get this worked out with the accountant, I would suggest, because in the, in the original, in the minutes, this was never, this is a position, this, when we change sub, engineering subcontractors, we go out for a request for proposal. If we were to change attorneys, we would have, we would have a request for proposal. Mr. Nobles is a subcontractor. Possibly, I, I would suggest that we put this out, request for proposal, and let anybody in the public here who feels like that they would be qualified to be airport manager, or maybe make a bid, or make our bids in terms of fuel system, to, you know, just to, to do it legally.
I definitely want to do it legally.
Let's make, I make a motion. We just start from ground zero, put it out to bid, put qualifications on the job, the salary, and Mark wants a bid on it, fine. If anybody else in the community wants a bid on it, fine. It's just such a mess right now. If we can just go, continue with Mark, this is just gonna continue on.
We have, we have one motion. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but.
And a, and a second?
Yes.
Yes. We have a motion by, say your motion again, please.
To not accept the resignation.
Okay. We have a motion, a motion, a motion by Commissioner Allen to not accept the resignation. And we have this second by Commissioner Massey.
But I have to take that back because if he's already hired with the city, you just said he couldn't be a contractor. That's what the, you said.
As an enrolled agent with the IRS, that's a true statement. You can't be a W-2 and a 1099 subcontract.
Right.
It doesn't work.
And I have worked hard time for the city as a police officer, and which I probably won't do anymore. But anyhow, that's neither here nor there.
So we had a second and a motion to.
I have to wait for that.
Oh, your second. We have a motion and a second. So can Ms. Massey, Commissioner Massey, is withdrawing her second, or should we vote?
No, we just need to hold it.
A vote on that to?
It just have, yeah. And she can vote against her.
Yes.
Second motion if you want to.
And we've done that before.
Well, I didn't even vote on it when you just said we can't do both of them.
We'll, we'll vote on this one and then we'll, we'll move forward.
You can vote naive and let it second it.
But we've got a motion and a second. We just need to get that off the table.
Call for the vote?
Yes, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Aye. So you have two in favor and three oppose. Okay, sing that.
Who was?
That is Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Massey in favor of not accepting the resignation. And.
And then the nays? Who was the nays?
Commissioner Walden, mayor of the past, and Commissioner Massey.
Then I'm officially resigned. Okay.
But what we're gonna do, we're gonna put it out to bid, I believe.
Ma'am, I am resigned.
Okay.
Well, they did.
Yeah, I didn't, they basically said, that is, you can give that to whoever that I vote to.
So I'm going to suggest that we.
Well, I would, I would, I would suggest a motion to accept the resignation, just to make everything clear.
That's what we did.
We did one to not accept. Sorry. The motion was to not. We did one to not accept. Sorry, the motion was to not accept the resignation. That was just voted on.
And so now, Commissioner Walden, you have a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion to accept by Commissioner Walden, a motion to, a, a second by Commissioner Massie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so you have an all opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Commissioner Allen, where's your vote?
Naye.
Okay, so we have three in favor, Walden, LaPaz, and Massie. And two opposed, Mathis and Allen, uh, on the-
And you're the top ranked here.
I, I've said, yes, I, I'm in favor. So, um, right now, we don't have an airport manager. We need to, I would suggest appoint, uh, find out about appointing an advisory board that can help us develop a list of duties that we can advertise for. Um, I would suggest that we need to hire CPA right away to, uh, work this out and see exactly who owes who what, because I'm sure Mr. Nobles will be, um, presenting some type of an invoice. Everyone can develop an invoice now after, after all these years. So, um, can we get a, a motion on moving forward here?
Make the motion move forward, I'll-
Okay. And, and, uh, would you like to appoint an advisory board to help us, uh, make some job duties and, and how we need to move forward on this? We, there are some people, there might be some people in the, in the audience tonight that might want to sit on the advisory board. I'm not sure.
Yeah, you want to sit. Would you sit on the advisory board?
No ma'am, I'll just be a tenant out there. Thank you.
We need to put out a-
An advertisement?
Advertise it.
Okay. Well, advertise for an advisory board?
Advisory board.
Does that need to be, um, five people or three people, or what does that need to be?
It's pretty hard to get people in.
And I think there's not a, that is not an established board.
It would still fall under sunshine.
No, no, it would definitely be a governmental board, but we have the Port and Airport Authority, which the commission sits as the board for that. And then what you're talking about is basically setting up, almost like an EDC for the, I mean, the A.
Just for the airport.
I mean, certainly we could say that the commission's contemplating forming an airport board and, you know, and, interested applicants come on down to City Hall and sign up.
Airport advisory board for the Carebel Thompson Airport.
How many people?
Three or five, I would think. Don't want to get too domestic.
They have to be residents of the city?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
County residents.
They don't have to do that, too.
You all are making this up.
That's up to Iowa. They have to have some aviation experience, I think.
Some maybe, no.
You all will approve, you will nominate and approve, just like you-
Aviation background. So then you just turn that in with their application, aviation background.
I have a question.
Yes.
On, uh, on average, how many planes land and take off out of there like per, per month?
I honestly, I don't, all the hangars are rented, but some of the hangars are not, they don't have airplanes.
On average, how many planes take off and?
It varies with weather, varies with what's going on as far as the tourists through this area, like sun and sun going on, training. We have, you know, a lot of military that does training and exercises through here. Several, that's my take.
I don't know how we'll find out who has passes out there.
I'm sure we've got a list, don't you?
You, you've resigned, but would you give us a list of who has passes? We need it.
I'm sure he's not resigning, I know that.
Ma'am, I will furnish everything I could possibly furnish. I will not be a hindrance to this. I love that airport.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And we want you to stay at that airport.
That's already been established.
We, we just want, we want to turn the page over, um, put it out for, um, request for proposal. Have a little advisory board that can advise us and can advise the staff. We have a motion. How many do you all have on board? Can you give your motion? Uh, Commissioner Walden, would you like three or five people on board?
We'll have three, please. I'm gonna be glad to get five.
Okay, three, but if we have five, four certainly won't, won't work. Okay.
Okay.
All right. We need to get the gag repaired out there. And that could be something that we can do. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion for, um, uh, to develop an advisory board and to put that as an advertisement in the newspaper. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Walden, a second by Commissioner Massie. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Commissioner Mathis, how would you like to vote?
I'd be fine.
Okay. Okay, all right. Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it was unanimous. All right. So is there anything else, any more discussion on this at this time? I'm sure we'll have it back on the agenda next, uh, yes, those two items that we know on the agenda. All right, uh, we need to approve the attorney bills.
I can motion approve the attorney bills.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Allen Walden to approve the attorney bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, then thank you all very much for this lengthy meeting. It's started so long, a meeting adjourned. Thank you, Commissioner.